Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to all of you. And welcome to the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, August 10, 2016. The meeting is now called to order. If you haven't already done so, please take a moment to silence your devices. Thank you. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Vice Chair Kane?
Here.
Chair Badami?
Here. Would everyone please stand and join Commissioner Hanson as she leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
One nation under God, indivisible, with one ruling justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages your active participation with verbal and written comments. To speak on any item this evening, please complete a speaker's card located within the benches. We have quite a few of them up here, but if you have yet to fill one out, please be sure to complete it and turn it over to a staff member. Matters relating to agenda items will be heard during the itemized public hearing. Items not on the agenda will be heard under verbal communications. We have desk items this evening for items number two and item number three. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to read the correspondence? Does anyone need more time? No? We don't have any requested continuances this evening, but I will look to our commissioners for subcommittee reports. And just so that the members of the audience know, that in addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members also serve on various town subcommittees. I know earlier this evening Commissioner Birch and I met as part of the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee along with Chair, I'm sorry, Mayor Specter and Vice Mayor Sayoc. So I don't know if you're prepared to give the report, otherwise I can do it. All right. So we discussed two items earlier this afternoon, one being the location of 16212 Los Gatos Boulevard, known as the Artesian Wine Depot. The applicant was requesting feedback on multiple commercial development proposals ranging in size, and with one proposal containing a mixed-use development with 700 square feet of seven residential units on top. We provided feedback on that. The other location was 16100 Green Ridge Terrace, and that's located in the hillsides near the Highlands of Los Gatos subdivision. The applicant was requesting feedback on subdividing one lot into eight lots for a planned development located on steep slopes near the Blossom Hill ridge line. Are there any other committee reports that members have to share? Seeing none. I will move to our verbal communications. Would anyone this evening like to speak to us tonight on an item that is not on the agenda? I don't have any speaker cards, and no one is coming forward, so we have a missed opportunity. All right. I will move to our first item, which is a consent item, and that is item number one, approval of the minutes for July 12, July 13, and July 27 of 2016. Do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Hudes?
I move to approve the minutes of those three meetings.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Vice Chair Kane. Commissioner Birch?
While I was recused from two of those meetings, I have viewed the meetings and read the notes, so I can vote on those.
Thank you. All right. I will call the question. All in favor? Aye, passage unanimously. Our first public hearing this evening is item number two, which is 477 Rate Avenue, Architecture and Site Application S-16-003. Requesting approval for a technical demolition, second-story addition to an existing single-family residence, and a request to reduce the rear setback for an accessory structure on property zoned R-1D. The APN number is 529-06-025. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site?
Madam Chair, I live within a 500-foot boundary of the subject property, and will need to recuse myself.
All right. You are recused. Goodbye. See you later. All right. Any other disclosures from commissioners? Seeing none. Ms. Armour, I understand you'll be providing us with a staff report this evening?
Yes. Good evening. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. The project in front of you today is the proposal by Sammy and Celeste Casse, to add a second story to their one-story home and build a new detached garage. The existing house is just over 900 square feet with a 370-square-foot detached garage. It is on a lot in the center of the one-block-long Rate Avenue. The proposal has three components: a new 450-square-foot detached garage near the rear corner of the lot, a 140-square-foot addition to the first floor, and a new 848-square-foot second story. Upon review, staff had three primary concerns: the fact that the proposal was a two-story house in a predominantly single-story immediate neighborhood, the relationship between that house and the neighbors to the rear that have a different elevation, if there's a slope behind that, and the detached garage setback, which is requested at three feet rather than the standard five. Looking at that, we were considering the neighborhood pattern as well as the proximity to the retaining wall along the rear property line. In reviewing these concerns that came up through our review, the second floor was, is considered a good design for the neighborhood because of its location within the roof form of the architectural style that's proposed. And when looking at the larger neighborhood context, there are a lot of two-story homes. It's within a small pocket, which is very much single-story, but you go a little bit beyond that. There is a wide variety of homes. There were comments received from the neighbors, as you saw in, attached to the staff report and in the desk item that you received today. There were a number of neighbors with concerns. However, through the process and in those written comments that you've received, all of those neighbors have met with the applicant, and their concerns have been resolved. They no longer object to the proposed project. So all neighborhood, neighbor objections that were received in writing have subsequently been removed. They've responded saying they are no longer concerned and in support of the project. Because the proposed house would be a two-story house in a primary, primarily single-story immediate neighborhood, staff has brought this proposal to the Planning Commission. But because the proposed design, because of the proposed design, the staff recommends approval. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the findings and considerations in Exhibit Two and consider approving the project with the proposed conditions in Exhibit Three. This concludes staff presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Armour. Questions of staff from commissioners? Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you for the thorough report. It appears that staff has a strong opinion on items one, two-story, and also the setback issue. I was not quite clear on staff's opinion on the second issue, which was rear elevation concerns with the rear neighbor. Could you expand on the issue and what the staff's opinion is on that?
Through the process of our review, there were some concerns from neighbors about the relationship between the house and those rear neighbors. Primarily, one neighbor was concerned about their views of the hills being partially blocked by what is now a two, going to proposed as a two-story home. However, the proposal is relatively low for a two-story home. It is proposed at 25 feet in height, and so while a two-story home does block, partially block some of their view from the hills, it is actually significantly lower than many two-story homes that we do see.
Commissioner Hudes?
I think you referred to some issue about the retaining wall and the elevation difference with the rear neighbor. Could you expand on that, please?
Right. So another issue that was discovered as the project was discussed and considered was some concern about the proximity of that garage to make sure that it, the three foot from the property line would be okay, given that there is a retaining wall along that property line. Our building official has taken a look at photos of the retaining wall and that area and feels that it can be safely handled during building permit. It's not, so staff is not concerned.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
I had some questions about the back setback as well. I understand from, the applicant will probably speak to the justification for it, but it's only a five-foot setback, and it just made me think, three feet isn't very much, especially when you're close to retaining wall. If any repairs need to be made to the retaining wall, I, you're saying our building inspector felt that it would be safe? Do we need other opinions on that? Or have we done setbacks that small? Because it just seems like a pretty small area to navigate, given that there's a retaining wall that's already been replaced a couple of times.
So staff's understanding is it's approximately a four-foot-tall retaining wall, and based on standard construction, the expectation of the design of the retaining wall and the design of the house, the three feet, or the detached garage, that three feet would be enough space so that they're not conflicting with each other, that the construction of the garage would not damage the retaining wall, or could be done so that those do not impact each other. But the request for three-feet setback instead of a four-foot setback is, is one of the items to be considered this evening. And so based on the applicant's presentation, I leave it to you to consider.
Further questions for staff? Seeing none. I will now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing and invite the applicant and their team. Up to 10 minutes to address the commission. When you step up to the podium, if you could please announce your name and your address for the record?
Hi, I'm Celeste Casse at 477 Rate Avenue, and this is my husband Sammy. So Sammy and I met about 11 years ago, and four years ago, we purchased this home at 477 Rate Avenue. We love the Town of Los Gatos, and it's right down the street from where Sammy grew up, down in Saratoga. For us, we purchased this house as a starter home mainly for its potential. We have several neighbors who are here tonight who can tell you that this 900-square-foot home needed a lot of love and TLC for us to move into it. We loved the neighborhood. We loved the short walk that there was to downtown, and we enjoyed getting to know our neighbors. And thank you guys for being here tonight and support. A few years go by. We got engaged, got married, and immediately found out that we were having a baby who is out there fussing in the hallway. So we knew it was time to start planning the expansion of our home. Babies are so little, but they come with a lot of stuff. So we love this neighborhood so much, so when we started talking about expanding this house to fit our family, we were really careful in how we came up with the design. We wanted the home designed to preserve the character of the greater neighborhood and our street, and we wanted it to easily flow with the rest of the neighborhood and our street.
Hi, I'm Sammy. Thanks a lot. Our neighborhood is in the midst of a transition. At one point, Rate Avenue probably consisted of a lot of single-story bungalows. Well, guess what? There's been a lot of changing of families, and throughout this transition, there's a need for enlarged space for growing families, which has led to a lot of changes in our neighborhood, both immediate and greater neighborhood, where we see a lot of renovations, two-story additions, and whatnot. Rate Avenue is only one block long with 40% of the homes that are currently two-story. Since we are constrained to small lot sizes at 5,500 square feet, going with the second story allows us to use the maximized potential of the lot and is conducive to our little one playing in the backyard, as well as any other kids that may come into our lives. As part of our journey in mapping out what our house would look like, we adhere to the residential guidelines to ensure that we met the specs of the immediate and greater neighborhood. An example of this is, if you look up at the plans, our second story is set back to reduce the overall mass, which makes it appear as a one-and-a-half-story home. The craftsman-style architecture conforms to the immediate and greater neighborhood as well. In addition, we've made all the changes recommended by the town's consultant, which has resulted in a home that is compatible with the scale of the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed structure, sorry, I'm not used to this microphone, so, contains several south-facing windows that are designed to allow for natural light and solar heat. The two-foot overhang along the eaves are designed to reduce the summer sun. The house will have a tankless water heater, high-efficiency furnace, and adheres to all of the green efficiency standards set forth by the town. This journey wouldn't be complete without the support of our neighbors. Throughout this 14-month journey I think we're at now, we've met proactively with all of our neighbors. We've socialized the plan in depth to ensure that if there are any concerns, we address them along the way. The neighbors have been completely in support with our project. They are excited about it. As soon as the story holes went up, we got calls, emails, texts, all in support and favor of our project. The retaining wall, which came up, was a, an issue that did crop up, and I can just shed some light on that real quick, because it did, it was raised. It's a three-foot retaining wall. It is at its third iteration, which you brought up. The first two were a wooden retaining wall. The third is a solid block wall, which is reinforced and has been blessed by Mike Machado, I believe is his name, from the Town of Los Gatos, as well as we brought a soils engineer and structural engineer to bless the sturdiness of the structure. Once again, it's only three feet, and there's ample room for a backhoe to go in and make any repairs. Due to the slope, the L-shaped footing goes up to the neighbor behind us, which allows for the repairs to be done either on our property or theirs, which allows for flexibility. We love Los Gatos and the neighborhood. As Celeste mentioned, I've been born and raised in Saratoga. We've designed a house with the town in mind and hope that they will agree and approve tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you for the thorough presentation and explanation. The, back to the back setback again, you mentioned in your letter that it would give you a larger play area, and I just wanted to understand, since it is a variation on our design guidelines, what the difference would be to you if, if you had delivered the five-foot setback versus the three, what would it mean to you in terms of the play area? Like, what would be the differential?
Okay, sure. Good question. So, in all honesty, we, we looked at the neighborhood, the greater neighborhood and immediate neighborhood, and in our analysis, we noticed that a lot of the garages are actually on the property line, whereas some are on three-foot or five-foot setback. We want to maximize the potential use of our, of our property. So in discussions with Jennifer, she mentioned that we could look into a three-foot variance as long as it conforms with the greater neighborhood. And so in order to maximize the use of the lot, we figured, why not go ahead with this variance, just so that it's more permeable ground and we can utilize it rather than just have wasted space on the lot?
I, I understand that, but in your letter, you said about, that it would give you a larger area for your children to play. So is, is that the issue, or is it just that it's, you perceive it as being consistent with the neighborhood?
Well, so, sorry, consistency is one, and definitely, of course, with baby number one and hopefully baby number two sometime down the road. Yes, we would, we want to make sure that we can utilize that space for our kids. So whether it's having a nice lawn area, a little play area for them, we figured, let's, let's go forward with this three-foot setback, just to allow for, for more utilization for the family as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Hudes?
Is it a two-car garage?
It is a two-car garage.
Looking at the location, wouldn't, would it be easier access with the three-foot setback rather than the five-foot setback, considering the corner of the house?
I'm not an architect, but I could probably answer that question on her behalf. Yes, actually, that's a very valid point. It would be easier to access the second car garage on the right-hand side with that three-foot setback.
Okay, thank you.
This is a predominantly one-story neighborhood for the immediate neighborhood, which is what we're required to look at per the residential design guidelines. So my question to you is, we do have a cellar policy that allows you to add additional square footage in lieu of visible mass, bulk, and scale. Did you consider that?
We did. And, and we felt more comfortable with a two-story home. We didn't want to have a cellar down below with, we just didn't know how constrained would be with, with the project. So the suggestion from the architect and with whoever we discussed was to do a two-story home, but align with the residential design guidelines in doing so.
Thank you. Further questions? Commissioner Hudes?
The consulting architect had, I think, four suggestions. I was wondering if they've all been incorporated in the final design?
Yes, they have.
Thank you.
So I have a question. It may be for staff to walk me through Exhibit 10, Sheet A107, unless you're familiar with it up there. But I want to make sure that there's no shadows cast on the neighboring properties. Can you confirm that for me, especially for the property to the rear?
Yeah. The, based on the shadow study, you've got, the, the top three images are the three times of day in June, so June 21st at 9:00 a.m., noon, and 3:00 p.m. And so you can see that the shadows do cross property lines slightly, but only barely, and do not go onto any other structures. With the December, the three on the bottom for December, the, the 9:00 a.m. one actually seems a little bit extreme, and definitely does not take into consideration the elevation change of those properties behind it. So would not extend that far onto those properties. And then December 21st at noon and at 3:00 p.m. And you can see that, that it does extend, but being December, most things do cause pretty significant shadows. So it's, it's not, by staff's evaluation, it's not of concern.
So would you say it would be a two- or three-hour gap in solar access to the rear neighbor who might not be aware of that?
It could be. And so obviously, it's going from 9 to noon, so you could kind of carry that over. Obviously, in looking at the shadow study on that sheet specifically, as Ms. Armour mentioned, for 9:00 a.m., that seems fairly extreme from even with the sun angle that would be at that time. And so additionally, with the elevation change, that it would not extend that far, but there will be shadowing, and there are also additional existing trees that are back there that also provide shadowing of those properties currently.
Okay. Shadowing of trees is a little different to me, but was this information shared with the neighbors as well, the solar study, so that they're fully aware of the, the plans and the impact that might have on their residences?
Yeah, actually, we brought the plans to both, it's hard to explain, but two of the neighbors that are behind us, we actually reviewed the shadow study in depth, and they looked through it, and they had no issues with it whatsoever. There are also, just to kind of add to Joel's point, there are 20-to-30-foot-high cypresses that do provide some shadow, but it, the plans have been reviewed in depth with two of the three neighbors behind us, and no objections.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudes?
With regard to the Sheet A107, it appears that the shadow impacts the house to the north. Is that correct?
Correct.
And what is the property address of that house? Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now invite comments from members of the public. I have one speaker card, and that would be from a Michael LaMonaco. And you'll have three minutes to address the commission.
Michael LaMonaco. I haven't been up here since they built the two-story building across the street on the corner of Rate and University, and I am actually the neighbor across the street from that. So I've been in the neighborhood for almost 20 years and have sold four out of eight of the two stories that have sold in the area. I'm a real estate agent with Cold Banker, and coincidentally had the house for sale that Sammy and Celeste bought, and coincidentally, the house behind them on University that is at a much higher level that looks down on their backyard. And what I see, and what I hope I see, is the opportunity for this beautiful new house to be built, and with the opportunity for our neighborhood to expand and grow. The house across the street, which is two-level and is about 2,400 square feet, I sold years ago, and just sold one on Bird Avenue that's two-story. So there's a need, of course, for two stories, but more than that, the neighborhood has evolved and is, is a really beautiful neighborhood. I don't want to leave. I put about $150,000 into my house since I've been there, and I, I appreciate when my neighbors spend money too, because it makes all the neighborhood go up in value. What I know about Sammy and Celeste is their integrity, and I know that they've planned hard and long with the neighbors to be sure that the relationships are intact and that people are really respected. The, the shadows, I'm actually putting in solar soon, and one of the things I was concerned about was shadows as well. And knowing that the sun comes east to west, kind of over the house, is a benefit to both what they're building and what I have, because you get the benefit of more sun. The sun behind their house, if I could just say, the house is elevated almost a whole, a whole house level above their house level. So the house behind them blocks all the sun for us, so I don't think that's an issue, if I just might say that. But on the whole, the fact that you've set it back with, as an architect that I studied many years ago, the fact that you set it back is a real benefit to the neighborhood, because you don't see a big bulky two-story house right on the street, and it looks like something that's been there for the last 60, 70 years. So my vote is yes, and my vote is that I think they've done a good job to make it something that we all love. And beyond that, I will tell you that someday, you'll have more kids, and you'll be able to enjoy that yard and the house, and with your blessing, it'll happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaMonaco. Don't go away. We may have questions for you. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, you can go away after all.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity.
You're welcome. All right. So at this time, I will invite the applicant back to the podium to further add comments about their application for up to five minutes. You don't have to take the opportunity if you don't want to. You do not want to? Pardon me?
However, if the applicant has their architect, could they come up with their architect if we do have any questions for them?
And for the architect, if you could complete a speaker's card and state your name for the record?
You can, you can complete it after you speak.
Mashid Akavon.
Thank you. We have questions. So Commissioner Birch?
I just want to clarify just a couple items, because I wasn't clear on the dimensions on the drawings. How far does the second story setback from the plane of the first floor?
Oh, without looking at the plans, I, you know, just, I submitted these a while ago, so I need to refer to the plans to answer that question correctly. Okay. If I have to guess, I would guess that from the first floor exterior wall facing the So the second floor is actually set back, looks like a... So the second floor is actually set back, looks like about two feet from the first floor.
Okay.
However, the second floor facing the street is only one bedroom, so it doesn't consume the entire width of the structure.
Okay. I think my only other question, just because this came up earlier, was in regards to the driveway layout and the additional two feet, which honestly is very minimal. But I did want to confirm that, looking at how this is laid out, you are hitting the corner of the house, that the angle onto the driveway into the far right-hand side is going to be adequate for a car to pull in and pull back out easily?
It is tight, but yes, it is adequate. But if we bring the garage forward to give the five-foot setback without the variance, it will be very difficult to get into the garage on the right side, yes.
Can I ask one other question?
Yes, Commissioner Birch.
Just one other question, because these are things I heard as my fellow commissioners were speaking. Could you walk us through maybe the analysis that you did on a cellar versus a second story?
So if we have an option to do a second story, obviously, the bedrooms will have natural lighting, you know, in every room, and we don't have to do like light wells, you know, into the basement, which is really sub... You know, I would say it's a subpar design, you know, to have a basement bedroom. It doesn't create as much value for a home. Certainly, to me personally, as an architect, natural lighting is extremely important. It's part of a green design. I'm a green design professional, and natural lighting, natural ventilation is all part of the design that I do. So obviously, if I have a choice, I would prefer to have a second-story addition rather than a basement addition.
Great. Thank you.
If I may make one more comment about the shadows that came up for December morning at 9:00, the sun actually doesn't really come up on December 21st until maybe 8:00. So the sun is extremely low in the wintertime in December, and at 9:00, it's just barely up in the sky. So any structure will cast a very extreme shadow at that time.
Thank you for your comments. Anything further? You still have a little bit more time if we're... No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The public testimony portion of the public hearing is now closed. Do commissioners have any questions, comments, entertain a motion? Commissioner Birch?
Well, I will actually go ahead and make a motion if I don't hear any other comment or maybe make comment after I make the motion. I'm going to move to approve Architectural Insight Application S-16-003, requesting approval for technical demolition, second-story addition to an existing single-family residence, and request to reduce the rear setback from accessory structure. Hang on, I'll find the findings.
Do we have a second?
Do you want me to read the findings?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead and read the findings.
I find that the proposal is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act, as adopted by the town, shown in Exhibit 2. The proposal is in compliance with the residential design guidelines, and that the proposed project is consistent with the redevelopment plan. I can find that as required by Section 9... Or 29, sorry. Point 10, point 09030 of the Town Code for the demolition of a single-family residence, shown in Exhibit 2, and make the consideration as required by Section 29, point 20, point 150 of the Town Code for granting approval of an architectural insight application, also shown in Exhibit 2, and approve the architectural insight application with the conditions contained in Exhibit 3 and the development plan shown in Exhibit 10.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Hudes?
Yes, I'll second the motion, and I wanted to make a comment about the neighborhood compatibility, because I think it was raised as one of the concerns by the staff. And it is something that I had to really consider deeply, because by definition of the immediate neighborhood, it looked like only one of the nine homes was two-story. But when I walked the street, there were 25 or 26 homes, and it looked to me like about 12 of those were two-story. And not just in one direction, but actually in both directions. And so it looked to me like it was a neighborhood that had already reached that tipping point, and all of the new construction was going to two-story. And I found that, for that reason, I could find it consistent with the greater neighborhood. And I understand that we are directed to give greatest consideration to the immediate neighborhood, but I believe also in the residential design guidelines, it speaks of the neighborhood in general as well. And so while a lesser consideration, just by the predominance of homes in the greater neighborhood, I was able to come down on the side of supporting the two-story.
Discussion? Commissioner Hanson?
I wanted to make essentially the same type of comment. We've seen quite a number of applications similarly to this, where it's very close to the largest house in the neighborhood, or the second-story or the first-second story. And so in our residential design guidelines, it says the two houses on either side and the five houses across the street. And I just wondered if the residential design guidelines are serving us well. We certainly do have discretion to look beyond that and weigh the rest of the neighborhood. But in this particular case, when you do walk down the street, it doesn't appear that it's a standout house, the first, second story, or anything close to that, because there were so many others. So it just made me wonder if the residential design guidelines need to have a review at some point.
Well, I would agree with that. I think they may need to be updated, because we're seeing a lot of this. However, I'm torn on this one, because the way the residential design guidelines read right now, they say that residential development shall be similar in most mass, bulk and scale to the immediate neighborhood. The immediate neighborhood is two, two, and five. So I have difficulty deviating from that, although in context with the other two-story homes in the neighborhood, I do see that about a third of them are two-story. However, Commissioner O'Donnell is not present tonight, and he brought up the creep that happens in neighborhoods. And that's when you get the two stories that start appearing in a neighborhood, and then you don't have a one-story neighborhood anymore. So with that in mind, with the creep, I will not be supporting the motion. And I'm torn in doing so, but the way the residential design guidelines read, I cannot support the motion. Any further discussion? Commissioner Erickson?
I also will not be supporting the motion, because it's clearly by the guidelines, and I won't repeat everything that Chair Badami said, but I think it's important for us to be consistent as we apply the residential design guidelines. And at a most recent meeting, we applied them and didn't... And use the immediate neighborhood as the test in a neighborhood in which the broader neighborhood had a number of two-story homes. And so... And in that particular instance, we were dealing with a lot larger lots, lots on the average size, that were twice the size of this lot. So by approving this one, we would be approving the largest far in the neighborhood, in the immediate neighborhood, and I believe squeezing a large home with two stories into a very small lot. And while there is demand for larger homes with two stories, we also need to preserve options in town of a variety of housing stocks. So if we don't take the position to protect and preserve some sizes of homes in town, we have enormous implications for the affordability of homes and the diversity of the population in town.
Any further discussion from commissioners? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Passes three to two. Commissioner Erickson and Chair Badami opposed. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights on the actions of the commission on this item?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you. I am recusing myself from item number three, Alberta Way, as the project site is within 500 feet of my residence, and I will return for items number four, five, and the adjournment. Vice Chair Kane will be presiding over the hearing, and we will call him back. Actually, I see him coming right now. We will take good care of you all.
Architectural Insight Application S-15-056, conditional use permit application, U-15-009, and the environmental impact report, EIR-16-001. It's 401-409 Alberta Way, located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Alberta Way and Los Gatos Saratoga Road. The application requests approval to demolish three existing office buildings and construct two new two-story office buildings with underground parking on property zone CH. It is APN 529-23-018. Have all the commissioners had an opportunity to visit the site? Do we have any disclaimers? Commissioner?
I had incidental conversation with someone who appeared to be in management of Alberta Way last week.
And I had conversation with someone who appeared to be in management of Alberta Way. I also had incidental contact with two of the residents. Ms. Armour, I understand you'll be providing the staff report this evening?
Yes, I will. Good evening. Good evening, vice chair and commissioners. The project in front of you today is the proposal by Shane Arters of LP Acquisitions to build two new office buildings at this corner of Alberta Way and Los Gatos Saratoga Road. The project site is surrounded on three sides by these two roadways and the Caltrans right-of-way for Highway 17. The proposed office buildings will be both be two stories and 35 feet in height, and will include a shared two-level underground garage. The three existing office buildings are all two stories, that vary in height, with a third level of office building below grade. Parking currently is provided on a surface parking lot that's accessed by three driveways off of Alberta Way. The proposed project would be accessed, would have two driveways off of Alberta Way. The project has gone through, or is going through, three phases of review. The first phase is staff review, looking at the technical details of what's proposed in compliance with the town regulations. The second is the environmental review, and the third is the public review and public hearing, which we are working through tonight. The first phase, staff review of the project, focused on... Included a number of items, but the main issues that were looked at by planning staff had to do with zoning compliance, and we did find that it does comply with the zoning regulations. There are two towers located, one over each of the entries for the two buildings, and those would exceed the 35-foot height limit, but it is an exception that is listed in the code as something that can be requested for non-happable space, and those are proposed at 39 feet in height. The design and compatibility of the project was reviewed. The consulting architect was deeply involved in providing comments and providing suggestions for changes to try and work with the original design and bring it more in compatibility with the neighborhood. And he, as you saw in his second report, does find that the architectural style and the modifications were implemented so that it is compatible. The third element of our review included the parking and traffic. Traffic report was provided by a consultant hired by the applicant, but it was reviewed by town staff and our consultant, and then incorporated into the environmental review. The parking provided does meet the town's requirements. It, in fact, exceeds it. The traffic study of the proposed use through the environmental review is considered to be a less-than-significant impact. The... After staff's initial review, to make sure that this was a project that didn't have any major conflicts with the town code, was the environmental review. The applicant chose to move forward with a full environmental impact report, rather than an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, which involves more in-depth analysis, covering the all topics in more depth than a mitigated negative declaration would. But this document did find that all potential impacts, according to SEQA, could be mitigated to a less-than-significant level. The mitigation that is included in the draft EIR that is included, that was provided to you previously, are mitigation on air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, hazards, and transportation and traffic. The public comments provided for the EIR and responded to in the response to comments and final EIR were predominantly concerns about the project itself, rather than specific concerns about the analysis in the environmental impact report. So those comments are available for you to view in your deliberations this evening. And the specific areas in the EIR that address the topics that were brought up are referenced in the response to comments. The third phase of the review process is the public comment phase. And as you will hear tonight, there are many concerns, particularly from the residents of Alberta Way. In the written comments that you received, there were a mixture of support and concerns about the project, with a strong leaning towards concerns, particularly, as I said, from those who live in the area. There were a number of different items brought up by those comments, but the items that were most frequently heard were concerns about the traffic and parking, particularly additional congestion on Alberta Way and at that intersection, access and to the other properties on the end of Alberta Way, and safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. The traffic and parking is one of the main categories of concern. Another would be the height and mass of the proposed building. As you have seen with the story poles, you can see that one of the buildings is quite close to Alberta Way. The other is set back substantially, but is also in proximity to the residential property that is immediately adjacent. The applicant has revised their designs to step back that facade slightly, to have a second-floor patio balcony area, and have a one-story element just slightly along the residential property line. And so the location that you do have the full-two-story wall that's visible from the public right-of-way is closest to that urban arterial. The third main category that we heard in the comments is concern about construction impacts, emergency access, air quality, and noise. These items are reviewed in the EIR, and there will be a construction management plan that will be developed as part of the building permit plan if a project... that will be developed as part of the building permit plan, if a project does move forward, to make sure that these items are addressed. Staff recommends that the planning commission hear tonight's public comments, review the findings and considerations in Exhibits Three and Four, and consider approving the project with the proposed conditions of approval in Exhibit Five. If the commission chooses to continue the item, staff asks for specific direction to the applicant for modifications to the project, so that staff can ensure that the applicant returns with a proposal that addresses the commission's concerns. This concludes staff's presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Armour. Question. Commissioner Birch.
Thank you. Thank you for the staff presentation. While we have the benefit of all this paperwork, I know many people don't, so I wondered if one of the items that's come up a number of times has been traffic. Were there any traffic mitigating efforts that were going to be done as a part of this project?
So there are. I will let the applicant speak in some detail to that as part of their presentation and answering questions. We do also have staff here to talk specifically if there are questions about the traffic improvements and staff's review of those. But quickly to respond to your question, there are a number of different items that are proposed as part of the project, including signal timing between that intersection and the intersection of Los Gatos Saratoga and Los Gatos Boulevard to try and help traffic flow. There's a proposal to extend the left turn lane, the length of the left turn lane that turns onto Alberta Way from Los Gatos Saratoga, so that there will be a larger pocket there so that any additional traffic coming in has a space to wait through the traffic rather than, or through the traffic signal rather than backing up. There also is proposal for, right now, Alberta Way has a two-lane, one lane in each direction. The proposal includes a split of the traffic that's leaving Alberta Way, so that there would be a free right turn lane, and there would be a lane that is a straight and left turn at the signal, so that if there is traffic that's going towards Highway 17, it has its own lane to turn onto Los Gatos Saratoga Road. There are additional improvements as well, but those are the primary ones.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Hanson.
I had one procedural question for staff, for our attorney. This is about the environmental impact report, because it's been a while since we've looked at one. One of the findings is that we would have to certify the environmental impact report, and just based on what our, what discretion we have, basically, the findings that are in the EIR, that whether it was an impact or not, is not something that we can contest. Is that correct? But we could discuss what the mitigation would be? I'd just like to understand that in terms of...
So I'm sure the town attorney can also jump in. If you have concerns, they would need to be based on substantial evidence, and then additional mitigation measures can't be added to the EIR. You could add or request adding additional conditions of approval that would act similarly to a mitigation measure, because all the mitigation measures become conditions of approval as well.
I did see that that was in there. Okay, so that would be one way to do it. I had a second question, and this, this project appeared in the staff report to have had a substantial amount of neighborhood outreach, and I'm sure that the applicant will speak about it. But to have this much opposition to the project after that much neighborhood outreach was obviously a concern that I saw. I wondered if staff was able to be present at any of those neighborhood meetings, because it doesn't seem like the concerns got resolved.
No. The neighborhood outreach was exclusively conducted by the applicant. Staff was not able to attend those meetings.
And related to that, you, staff is recommending approval of the project, and with this much opposition, I, but you've, what makes you feel comfortable with this project, given the level of opposition that, there are some letters in favor, but what makes you comfortable with approving the project?
Staff reviewed the project based on the town code, the environmental review that was provided by our consultant hired by the town, by, about, we reviewed the project for conformance with our zoning, our general plan, applicable design guidelines, and as we said in the staff report, while there are definitely some concerns that have been brought up, we feel that the professional opinions provided to us on issues like traffic, et cetera, do show that the impacts will be less than significant, and so based on that analysis from our professional opinion, we are recommending that the commission consider approval.
Thank you.
And I would just add to that as well. I think, you know, we don't make our recommendations based on the amount of opposition or support for projects, so we try to look at that independently.
Thank you. Commissioner Hootis?
Yeah, thank you. And there's quite a bit of material to review here for this application, and I know there's quite a bit of interest of the public in speaking about it, so I want to contain my staff questions to just a very small set. Before we move on, I have another series for staff that will come later, but I wanted to address the EIR, some questions in the EIR, and just a couple of sort of foundational ones. My understanding, and I'm referring to page one of Attachment A, and in there, there's a statement that the, about land coverage, and it's allowed by the mixed-use commercial...
Commissioner, excuse me. You're looking at the final EIR?
Yes, the final.
All right, thank you.
Sorry. Attachment A, the final, page one, and it says, it talks about land coverage allowed by mixed-use commercial land use designation. So just foundational, is this a mixed-use designation? And if so, what are the mixes, and is a mix required by the land use designation?
The, the land use designation from the general plan is mixed-use, but does not require mixed-use. It allows for it, but the office use proposed is allowed within that designation.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had is about traffic impact fee, and again, on the final, let's see, from the Department of Transportation, June 13, the response, I'm sorry, yes, the Department of Transportation letter, June 13, the response, page 2-30 from the EMC Planning This is regarding a traffic impact fee, and it says, the commenter suggests that the project should be required to pay a traffic impact fee, and portions should be used for specific improvements to state routes 17 and Route 9. However, the town does not have an approved fee schedule at this time. Is that correct? Is there no fee schedule, and will no impact fee be paid?
I'm going to defer to our Public Works Department to respond to that question.
Good evening, Commissioners. Lisa Peterson, Town Engineer, I'm here also with the traffic engineer, Jessie Poo. So, of course, the town itself has traffic impact fees that we will be charging for this project. This is a comment that's coming from Caltrans, and, you know, currently, that's not a cost that we have as far as, you know, what that traffic impact fee would be.
So do we anticipate receiving a fee for this, and is it based on an approved fee schedule?
Yes, so that's correct. Additionally, it's important to note that Caltrans will need to be reviewing these plans. They might come up with all kinds of comments and concerns that aren't being addressed at this point until they review it.
Okay, so the statement from Caltrans in that letter is incorrect, then?
So Caltrans...
The town does not have an approved fee schedule at this time.
So we have a fee schedule. The town itself has a fee schedule. So as, as far as Caltrans goes, you know, and kind of any type of fees they might, you know, try to apply to, that's something that I'm not aware of. And we would have to, again, this would be something that would be put through Caltrans. Once Caltrans goes through it, they would have their own conditions that they would come forward with and ask the applicant to adhere to.
Okay, maybe you could follow up and look at the text on page 230, and let me know and assure me that Caltrans is incorrect with regard to that statement.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner, let me jump in for a second. Ms. Peterson, I read lots of things, and I don't remember where everything is that I read, but I read something about X dollars per square foot, and the total was 617,000 as a traffic impact fee, which was then going to be used on Highway 9, was going to be used on Los Gatos Boulevard, was going to be used on Alberta Way. That was a definite figure.
Yes, that's correct, and that's the town's traffic impact fee. So we, we, the town, we have a traffic impact fee, and that traffic impact fee is going to be about $615,000. That's correct.
So I'm going to, Commissioner Hootis's question, yes, there is a traffic impact fee, yes, it's in the plan, if approved, yes, it will be paid and used for the three items in the report. Is that correct?
That is correct, and, and I would have to read the verbiage that you're referring to, but I thought that you were referring to that Caltrans itself, because this is in Caltrans right-of-way, so they do have the opportunity to also have requirements of this project.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hanson, you had your hand up.
I just had a clarifying question on this. When we've seen traffic impact fees before in development, the, we were told in a previous hearing that the money goes into a fund. So just to reiterate the question, there is a list of traffic improvements that are going to be part of this project. Are they being paid for by the applicant outside of the traffic impact fee, or is the $615,000 going to be used for that?
So in our, our traffic impact fee list that has gone to council, there is something on that list that calls out for complete street improvements on Highway 9 at that location. So we are asking the applicant to provide some improvements for complete streets on Highway 9 right at the intersection. So at that location, there, that would probably come off of that traffic impact fee, but the majority of the improvements that we are requiring would not come off of that.
They'll be paid for outright by the applicant?
Correct.
In addition to paying the traffic impact fee?
That's right.
That's how I thought it worked. Thanks.
I have some questions for staff, if no one else does. Ms. Armour, you made the point about the towers being higher than the limits that we impose, and said there was a potential exception, and we know the conditions are no storage, no access, no anything in that tower. But when I read that provision, and again, I don't know where it was, it said exception could be made, subject to the decision of the site, of the deciding body. Did it not say that?
Absolutely. That is, that is one of the elements for your consideration this evening, whether to allow that exception or not.
So it's our, it's our discretion. It's not a given.
Correct.
To be decided. You mentioned there were three driveways, and I'm having a lot of trouble with the driveways and the basement, and we'll talk more about that later.
The existing project, or existing property has three driveways.
And the proposed is going to have...
Is two.
Two. One of them is an in-and-out, the other is an out?
Correct.
And the in-and-out runs next to the in-and-out of the development next door. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And provides access to the underground parking.
Right, which, which I will discuss later. Emphasis is given to the, by staff, emphasis is given to the revision of the, of the town's consulting architect, that initially he's concerned, it's too big, it's this and that, and then he said, well, it's okay. What's in the report, in summary, though staff has some concerns about, about the project's scale and relationship to neighboring buildings, and the town architect was even more specific about intensity and height and... It says in particular, at the corner of Building B, closest to Alberta Way and Los Gatos Saratoga Road, also Highway 9. Recommendation with approval, as the applicant has responded to the recommendations of the town's consulting architect, what Mr. Cannon received in response to his concerns, I'm not an architect, and I mean no offense, but there were shifting of panels and gonna do this and gonna do that, but as I have tried to figure out, between his concern of his first level, first letter, which was rather severe, and his, well, okay, of his second letter, is it not a fact that the square footage didn't change and the height didn't change?
I believe that the square footage did actually change, that it was reduced slightly, and while the overall height of the structure was not reduced, there were a number of roof forms that were converted from horizontal full-height roof, or wall with no roof eve to the currently proposed consistent slanted roof form.
So it's still 35, it just has a different look?
Right, so that the, there are the lower eves along all sides instead of having some features that are much more dominant.
I really tried to find the reduction in square feet, and let's use round numbers, it's 93,000 around there, and it was 93,000 before the letter, and I'm thinking it's 93,000 after the letter. I didn't see a reduction in square footage.
I believe there was a reduction. It was not a significant reduction.
Okay. And the corner of Alberta and Highway 9 was essentially unchanged. Is that correct? Which is, which is one of my concerns, that his mass is right on the corner, and I didn't see that alleviated. Going to the north wall, there are condominiums behind that portion of the building. Was any of that changed?
So I believe that some of the new kind of second-floor balconies that provide for a one-story elevation, there are some areas where you have one-story elements. There are some of those that run along the property line with the condominium property next door, the residential, so that there is a little bit of a stepping up in some portions of that side of the building. The, the full two-story that you referred to on the corner of Alberta Way and Los Gatos Saratoga, I don't believe that there was significant change to that, but being that that is the most commercial corner of the lot, staff still felt comfortable with their recommend, our recommendation.
Tell me what you mean by one-story element. I walked the project, as we all did it at length, and on that, what I'm calling the north wall, the north face, maybe I should have read it closer, I still see a two-story building, and the Commercial Design Guidelines, 2.3-point-something, if I really can remember that, talks a great deal about commercial buildings being dissuaded from issues of privacy with residences that may rebut the commercial project. And it, you know, it was the one where they gave the visual lines looking into somebody's house, and I thought, gee, this, this looks like an example of that.
So the, what I'm referring to in my comments about one-story elements, you can see on, in the plan set, page A2.12B, this is the floor plan for the second story of 405 Alberta Way, which is the building that is more set back from Alberta Way and is right immediately adjacent to the residential.
About how many pages in is that?
It's a significant way in.
Give me the reference again.
So it's A2.12B.
I just got looking. Okay.
All right. Along the right... Along the right-hand side of that sheet, you can see that there is a difference of more than 10 feet from the wall of the floor, the exterior wall of the building, and the edge of the outdoor space, so you can see the difference between the first-floor footprint and the second-floor footprint along that entire building edge.
So in summary, if we can, the Commercial Design Guideline reference that I'm making, talking about privacy, you feel that this addresses that concern?
What I was referring to was that this provides some stepping back of the building mass away from those residential neighborhoods, so that was the element that I was referring.
And if you don't agree, that's perfectly fine. You probably will want to ask some of these questions of the applicant as well, so that you can get their input. Obviously, these are discretionary actions, so you have the ability to suggest modifications or require modifications as it moves forward.
Well, I value your opinion, and that's why I was going, this is on page 18 of the Commercial Design Guidelines, where they draw the arrows of a commercial building looking into the property of a private residence, and that was what was concerning me. Thank you. Other questions for staff? I'll now open up the public, I'll now open up the public hearing and invite the applicant and their team to address the commission for up to 10 minutes. I have a number of speaker cards that I think is from the applicant and the team, and if you'd identify yourself, I'll know who's who. Just so that you know, the 10-minute clock will start when you begin a presentation, and the buzzer's gonna buzz, and it means you have 30 seconds left, it doesn't mean you're done, and that'll apply to the public as well. When the first buzzer buzzes, you're not done, you have 30 seconds, so you can continue on a bit more. Yes, sir?
Chair Kane and Commissioners, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Randy Lamb. I'll introduce Shane Arders and Alicia Guerra, who will be speaking as well. During our presentation, would you like us to answer any of the questions you've asked, or would you like us just to make our presentation, and then you can ask those questions later?
As you wish, you can make your presentation and then offer answers to the questions that came up.
Well, I'm just concerned that 10 minutes is 10 minutes, so some of these answers that you've, the questions you've asked, might take a while, so I'd rather
So when your 10 minutes are up, I may have a few questions for you.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Before we start our presentation, I would just like to take just a quick second, and first of all, thank the town staff, they work so hard to balance the competing interests and views with the developer, the community, and also the deciding bodies through the development process. Personally, this town staff, excuse, can you hear me now? Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Give us your name again, please.
Yes, I'm Shane Arders.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I was saying about the town staff, they work so hard in balancing the competing interests and views of the, of a developer to the community, and also to the decision-making Personally, I have gotten to know the staff, and they're very smart and responsive, and it's a pleasure working with them, and we look forward to working with them to the future, too. Next, I'd like to thank the planning commissioners for their preparation for this evening, our application team, which consists of myself, Randy Lamb, who you heard from, which is the managing member of this company, and also Alicia Guerra, will be accompanied by our architect, our landscape architect, our civil engineer, and the rest of our team members that were here to respond to any of your comments. So let's go ahead and start on the presentation. A little bit about us. Can everyone see okay? All right. We are a wholly-owned subsidiary of Lamb Partners, and we've developed over 1 million square feet of commercial space on the peninsula, as well as many multifamily buildings and some luxury single-family homes. We have over two decades of real estate experience, and we know how to develop, and we know how to work together as a team. We are considered a responsible developer, who builds beautiful, sustainable, and practical buildings. Here are a few examples. To the left is 150,000 square feet Class A office building that we just completed construction in Mountain View. In the center is a 46 condo complex, luxury multifamily building, and to the right is an example of a luxury single-family home. You can see that individuals are drawn to our buildings, companies love to lease from us, and employees love to work in these buildings, because they're state-of-the-art, they're efficient, and they have interactive pedestrian areas for outdoor use, and most importantly, they're very safe for the employees and visitors. Our developments are proven to strengthen existing businesses and support local merchants. Finally, our company cares. We work very hard to do the right thing. We don't short-circuit responsibility, or nor do we say inflammatory remarks. We respect others. We first seek to understand, then to be understood. We don't look for exceptions, we just follow the rules. So now, what I'd like to do is turn the time over to Randy Lamb, that will talk about the project, and then Alicia will wrap up our presentation.
Commissioner Kane and Planning Commissioners, thank you. Randy Lamb, I was, I'm gonna walk through, especially in six minutes, this is gonna be a quick one. Okay, our proposed use.
Sir, if it would help, take the microphone out.
Sure. Am I standing in your way again? Okay. Okay, am I okay? Okay, great, thank you. Randy Lamb with Lamb Partners and LP Acquisitions. The first question you would ask, why the proposed use here? This is an office site currently, it's zoned commercial, highway commercial, and given the office environment in the, of the future, or what we believe the future is and what we build in the valley, this is an ideal site, it has great access to transportation, has Highway 17, it has Los Gatos Saratoga Road, I mean, it's a terrific site, it's within seven-tenths of a mile of downtown Los Gatos, it meets all the criteria that we look for when we're building one of these projects. Los Gatos office vacancy, as you can see, in 2012, it was almost 11% in terms of what Class A office vacancy was alone. Today, that vacancy rate is about 2.6%, which tells you there's a tremendous amount of interest, and as you know from other parts of the town, a lot of interest in Class A office. That is, in our opinion, that's the future. These slides are a little detailed, so I will fly through them, give them the amount of time we have. All of our projects, as Shane mentioned, are Class A, that's all we build, that's all we've ever built. I mean, whether it's in Palo Alto, Mountain View, Los Altos, that's exactly what we build. We create these areas that are pedestrian-friendly, they're on- transit corridors, we want people to be able to bike there, we want people to deal, carpool, to vanpool, to, you know, all the types of things that you would think for a site like this. In this particular case, our goal as well at surface level was to have as minimal parking as possible, so that we'd have people's space, either people, visitors' parking, as well as people being able to walk the site, and then also, all of our parking is out of sight and underground in two levels of parking structure. And he'll bring more about that later. This is our site plan, you can see our building that's up against Los Gatos Saratoga Road and Alberta Way is on the left, that's the 401 building, I think that Chair Kane had some questions about us related to one of these corners. This is our site plan. Our building on the other side, 405, which is a little further back from the street, is, shows the same architectural quality and dimensions that we do not just build a monodimensional building, ever. The site plan itself, this is Los Gatos Saratoga Road, this is Alberta Way, I know there were a couple of questions on this in terms of the drive aisle, people will come into the site, whether it's from, from, most likely, and you'll hear about this a little later, too, in terms of our transit discussion, come into the site, all the way down to the end, and then down into the parking structure. So that's what you're looking at, and then our sites always feature landscape, significant landscaping and screening, which also was a question earlier, relative to adjacency to our neighbors. Community outreach, so, almost everyone here, I think, has been to one of our 14 community outreach meetings. There was a question earlier about how we had these, we actually offered it to, as a broad open policy, but we also offered it to each of the HOAs, not knowing how many people would come. Out of the number of people that live in that street, or all those streets in there, we had over 100 people come to the 14 different meetings, which we think is, is far and away probably our highest turnout ever for a project. We went to Las Casitas, Los Gatos Commons, Bel Vista, Pueblo de los Gatos, everyone gave us great input, whether it was about the buildings themselves, or their concerns about traffic, the Los Gatos Commons folks were very concerned during construction, how we get emergency vehicles in and out, and what our construction plan will be with the town. So, I mean, we've been through, I mean, the things you're gonna hear tonight, we've heard them 14 different times, and so we're, we have tried to be very aware of what those things are, and then also to address them. And things that you talked about earlier, whether it's setbacks, or ridge lines, or anything else, those are the types of things that we've done, we believe, to be good neighbors in that community and make those buildings a fit within what we have. In terms of transportation demand, we have a number of clean air vehicle parking spaces, we have vanpool, carpool, we've got parking for 99 bikes downstairs in the, in the parking garage, and then we also are supplying employee showers for people who might decide to ride to work, or what have you, in terms of their bikes, and then also passes for various transportation. In terms of the TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis, there would be a slight daily increase in terms of the cars, the AM peak, the PM peak, those numbers you all see in the EIR, as well as what staff suggested, so I won't go into all those now, but it was less than significant impact in terms of what the EIR determined. It was already discussed in terms of extending the left-turn pocket lane, restriping Alberta Way to get folks out, so they don't get stuck in that left-turn lane going up to Los Gatos Boulevard, installing a bike box on Alberta Way, and then the interconnects from Los Gatos Boulevard down to Alberta Way, and then some ADA-related things as well. Construction, 14 months, start sometime spring, summer of next year, go through fall of 2018. I can break all those down for you if you like, but, but in the interest of time, I won't. The town and we will agree to a construction management plan, and we have already offered to have weekly meetings for safety with the residents, to whoever would like to meet with us and talk about it. Sequa, okay, town ran a EIR process? Would you like me to do?
We're gonna have to wrap that up for now. After, after the community speaks, you'll have five additional minutes, but for now, let's, let's see if there's some questions from the commission. Commissioner Birch, you have a comment?
Well, I was debating if I should kindly ask the chair for potentially like two more minutes, because some of his comments may affect the public comment, but I will concede to the chair on that.
How about two more minutes?
I'll take whatever you can give me.
All right.
Is that okay?
I'm the big bad wolf in here, even though my last name's Lamb, so I'll take, I'll take whatever I can get. Okay, thank you. The, the town ran a full EIR process, which you heard from staff, so I won't go into that, but transportation was run by Hexagon, which is probably one of the most well-respected transportation engineers, probably in the Bay Area, let alone California. They've been doing it for 30 years, they are among the best, and they know what they're out looking for, and they know how to protect the town. The town engineers were very involved and giving them direction on what they wanted. No significant impacts identified, fully complies with the 2020 general plan. Our goal with any of our projects, whether we're building residential or office, in this particular case, office, is to bring office closer to jobs, if we're building residential, it's to build homes closer to work. That's how we get people off streets, and that's how we get people off freeways, that's what we do. Let's see, our goal tonight would have, be to have you vote to certify the EIR, and we'd love to have you vote to, to approve our development application as well, or give us specific guidance and a date certain to come back and talk to you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from staff, Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you, and I have many, many questions, but I really am eager to get to the public input, to sharpen those questions, and to make them more relevant. I wanted to just ask you two things that you mentioned in your presentation, which I didn't really hear about or see in your, in your application or your supporting letters. One of them, one of the statements you made is that, that you support local merchants. In what way does this project specifically support local merchants?
You're gonna have some of the best companies in the world take a look at this site. You're gonna have them spending money in town, whether it's with caterers, whether it's with retail, whether it's having people go into town for meals, or buy during Christmas, buy during any other time of the year, so you're gonna have 390 folks that are gonna be active, really well-paid people, I mean, these are really, really well-paid people that come into these sites, they spend money in the community.
Has there been any specific engagement with the downtown, or the Chamber of Commerce, or merchants about connections or services that might be provided?
We haven't made them directly, we've had, we have done an overture to the Chamber and talked to them about the significant impact that we believe this, our project will have in the, in the downtown area.
Okay, I have another question relative to the presentation, if I may.
Sure.
You mentioned community outreach, and there's a lot of documentation about that. One of the things I look for is not just, you know, one way in terms of describing the project, but actually listening and making changes as a result of that outreach. In your, I don't think it's numbered, but you have a slide called Community Outreach, and a point four, four points on that page, and I wonder if you could elaborate a little bit on the changes that have been made as a result of community outreach, and what substantive things have been done as a result of that process?
Yeah, I'll probably ask our architects to get up and talk about that in terms of the question, but let me give you the broad brush. The broad brush is that the comments that you'll hear tonight, and the comments that we heard, are all about mass, scale, height, how do these buildings impact my view, how do these buildings, how are they next, as adjacent buildings to my project or to our homes? How is our traffic going to be affected? How is our safety? The Los Gatos Commons folks, especially, were as big as anyone on safety, emergency vehicle access, having red zones that are actually red zones and not blocked by, by construction folks. I mean, there's, there's probably 10 or 15 alone that we've talked to staff about. The building massing was a question that Chair Kane asked earlier, in terms of vertical and horizontal elements, as well as roof lines, where we were able to reduce the size of the building alone, based on the prior comments of folks that are here in the room tonight, as well as your consulting architect. The building did drop by a, just under, I wanna say 1600 or 1700 feet, both buildings, in terms of moving them away from the adjacencies, I think your question was about the corner of Los Gatos Saratoga Road and Alberta Way, which actually, by the way, is built into a hill, there's a pretty big drop in this project, I think it's almost nine feet from one side, from that side all the way down, so that building is actually built into the hill there, and up against that, I wouldn't call it the setback, but it's very close to that side. And then on the other side, we actually created a two-story element and moved that second story back to be away from Las Casitas, and then I specifically actually went into one of the residents who's here tonight, into her back area of her townhome, to take a look and see how her view was impacted by our 405 building, which is the building to the right, up against the north boundary of our property. We have now sourced about 14 different potential screening and shade trees that will basically block our buildings from the Las Casitas folks completely. block the, our buildings from the Los Casitas folks completely. And so we, we now have a number of varieties of, of evergreens that will work to, to do what was asked before, in terms of create privacy for adjacent residential users.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Commissioner?
Um, I don't want to make labor the point, but I, I had a similar question, but a little different, about the community input, and that, and I'll want to hear from the residents. I won't go into, but I, I, I was, I've heard, there was lots and lots of pages of, of summaries of the meetings and everything, but what was in the summaries was lists of questions. And moreover, I, I kind of looked at one for, it was the same questions and listed, and almost as if it was cut and pasted. So it made me wonder, like, what kind of real discussion happened, and it sounds like you answered some of those questions when Commissioner Hootis asked the question, but, but, you know, it, it was great to have all that paper, but it would have been better if it said, you know, these are the issues that were brought up, and this is the response that we gave.
Uh, so, so I, I understand your question, the, and comment. The, the answer is, is that many had the exact same comments. Some things that we could address, we did. Many of them were more broad. How do we make the building shorter? How do, or smaller? How do we, how do we make it smaller? How do we make it shorter? How do we not make it looks like there's so much mass? It's hard for us to get out and answer these things when we have a, a, a current application into you. We can answer some of the things that were more of the broad brush, but it's hard for us to get in and say, oh sure, we'll implement that, or, oh sure, we'll implement that, because some of them we can do, some of them we can't do. We got direction from staff, both at planning level, at public works, and at building. And so it's, a lot of the things, I don't know that we have full ability to react to.
Okay, fair enough. I do have another question, and we'll probably have to talk about it more later, but there were some questions in some of the public comments about capacity. Now that your letter said that the building was, that the buildings were being built for 390 employees, is that correct? Some, some of the resident comments said with some of the, you know, newer layouts with Silicon Valley companies, that, you know, you could pack more in, and I, at some point, there needs to be a fire, fire marshal thing, so I wanted to understand a little bit about that. And then the second thing was, I totally agree with the comments about the location of the building relative to the freeways, but I was just trying to think through my day, if I were an employee in that building, like, how, how they would actually get to downtown, because it's actually pretty much of a walk, and, and there, there are some sidewalks being built, but there aren't any bike lanes, and so you're gonna have all these bike parking, and I was just trying to figure out where were the people gonna go, or were they gonna have to get in their cars and drive downtown to go have lunch? And maybe we could talk more about that later, but that was...
I'm happy to answer it now, if you want.
Okay.
Okay, so, so in terms of your, your question, the, I'll work backwards, because I can't remember what your first question was.
It was about the capacity.
Oh, capacity, okay. So in terms of the 390, the, we provide 390 parking spaces because the town's parking code requires that. That's the maximum number of peep, of, of parking stalls. You're, as a town, gonna control the number of people that are in that building. You're gonna have a business license, and you're gonna have a use permit. So that's the way that towns control how many people are in there. I would, based on the comments that we've had from the community, I think you're gonna have a very strong advocate community to control the number of people that come in and out of that building. Let alone I, as the owner and the landlord in there, I'm going to do the same, just so you know. So, so again, the town is gonna control with the user how many are in there. I'm gonna control, in my lease, how many people are in there.
Right, well, how many people do you think should be in there?
Well, companies work, people work differently now, and, and I think you'll hear that when you talk to our transportation folks, and your transportation folks, they're the, the people that reviewed all the information. There's much more hoteling that goes on, there's much more people working from home, telecommuting. I, I would, I, I said this, and many of you heard me say this at, at our, at our community outreach meetings, I have never built a building that has a parking structure that has ever been full. And the reason for it is because people live differently now. The parking codes are, are from times a while ago, rather than what they are today. People don't work, I mean, there are a number of people here tonight who will talk to you about their concerns about our construction, because they work at home. They have offices, they have businesses, they have whatever, they, at headquarters, but they work from home. That's what we're gonna see there. The same thing, is people that might have a job at that building that don't necessarily work there, they travel, they teleconference, whatever it might be. So it, it's a very real thing. I, I, I think you'll see that, that if that building is ever 75% full in terms of cars, that will be a big day.
Okay, and then my second question about what the employees' life is gonna be like in terms of interacting with the town.
Well, a couple of things, and we've talked about this to our, the folks that came to the community outreach. Depending on the size of the company, you're gonna find them incenting people to be on bikes, you're gonna incent them to carpool, you're gonna, you're gonna have loner vehicles. I think you're also gonna see them incent people by either having shuttles that get them to work, or van pools. I think you're also gonna see shuttles that might be able to take folks during a certain period of time as an incentive down, to downtown Los Gatos. I'd prefer they walk or ride. I know there, a lot of the residents here have concerns about that stretch over Highway 17, and at the southbound 17 off-ramp, in terms of visibility and the, the height of those, the vegetation that's there. I, I don't know how we get around that on our project. That's something that definitely sounds like needs to be addressed to be able to enhance that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hootis?
Yeah, this is just a comment and a quick question about it. I, I mean, this is a complicated application, and, you know, we're obligated to review all the materials that are provided to us, including desk items that come in by midday, and from a process perspective, we have new information that's been presented in your presentation. It would be very helpful to have this type of thing in advance, so that we can consider it, although I, you know, find that, you know, it's, it's useful to ask questions about it. I hope you understand it may be difficult to reach one of the, one of your requests in terms of specific guidance when new information comes in during the hearing itself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions, Commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Lamb.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to open the public, public portion of the hearing. And, Mr. Lamb, if I didn't say it, when, when the public, public portion is completed, you'll have five minutes to offer additional information, or rebuttal, or whatever. So you'll be back. We have a lot of speaker cards, and as they, did you watch the town hearing last night?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's two things I wanted to say. There was a lot of passion in that room as well, and the mayor asked for respect, and trying to keep the comments down from the audience to a minimum, as in zero. There's a lot of passion in this room tonight, and I would like everybody to respect everybody. Also, the mayor called up folks three at a time to facilitate the process, and that's what I'm going to do as well. So you can take a seat up front, and we'll do three speakers, and then three more, and we'll move right along. I have a card from Christie Corbiso, and Thomas Dunn, and Mark Rogge. Hope I said that right. Get that microphone down, there you go.
Well, thank you for having me, and thank you for calling my card, I appreciate it. And I also thank you for representing Los Gatos, our town. I'm a resident on 420 Alberta Way, and I've been there 20 years, and just concerned about the growth and the mass. I, I moved there, and I bought there, and it was a very quiet area. It's a dead-end road, it's one-way, no, there's no exit, we have elderly, and we have children on the street as well. So my concern is the growth and the mass. I applaud the applicant for wanting growth, and I applaud the applicant for starting up a new building. That's how it is in life. We always want to grow, and we want more. But for 420 Alberta Way, I don't think it's appropriate. Adjacent to that, and across the street, my home, my windows actually look at the building. The story poles, I'm, and thank you also for being, going out to the property and looking at the story poles and the height. I am in a two-story building, and the story poles are higher than my building, and I'm upstairs. So it's just for me, and for, I know the people in Alberto, it's a massive production. We're talking 300 spaces. Along with that, my concern is the growth of our town. We are a town. We have, and I know that maybe most of you hopefully have driven through Los Gatos during the weekend, and our GPS now directs, on our GPS, it actually iPhones direct us through town when there's too much traffic on Highway 17. I appreciate some of the things that have happened in downtown, the flags when you're crossing the street, that's one, and also closing off, entering Highway 17 from downtown. So I do appreciate those things. I feel that this mass in this project is appropriate for Silicon Valley. He mentioned Mountain View. That's appropriate there, and I applaud him for that. And I applaud everybody who's working on the project. But for our street, 420 Alberta Road, it's not appropriate, and that's how I feel. And I think I speak for all the people, residents, children, and elderly who live on that street.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Dunn? Give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name's Thomas Dunn. I'm at 420 Alberta Way. My property is right in front on the street, that looks directly across the property, and if you see...
Take the microphone.
If you see the far-right picture, that's the view that I have every night when I come home, and that's the view that we retired to, is having the mountains, the trees, the sunlight, and the sunsets. I raised four children in this town. When they all went out, as they do, we downsized, like most people will do, downsize and stay in the town, and found a beautiful one-road, one-lane, two-lane road, dead-end road, four condos on there. You can see the beauty of across the street, of the building that they're looking at to demolish and tear down, but we've got trees, and olive trees, and redwood trees. We've got a complex over there that's 30,000 square feet, only a third the size of what the project is proposed to do, and that houses probably all of the local businesses that are, small businesses are there, and so they can bike to work, they can have a short commute to work, and they can walk to town. So everything that's needed is already there, just a little smaller, without having to demolish it and tear it all down. And again, I believe the style fits into it. The neighborhood, we talked about the neighborhood. I don't know that there's a neighborhood in Los Gatos that can kind of brag about the fact that there's four generations on this street of these four houses. We have seniors, we have baby boomers, which are in here, us. We've got some that are pre-retired and retired baby boomers. We have our children here in these different condos, and those are the millennials, and we have the millennials that are all having babies now. So it covers four generations, all on one block. It's a family, and the businesses across the street are friends and neighbors of ours and family. So that's kind of the, the community that we'd like to keep. Now, I'll touch a little bit about the, the concerns, which is the size, the mass, and the height of the building. Again, we feel it is too tall, and to put 93,000 square feet on one acre, granted, it's a two-acre lot, but it's one acre that they've actually filled the space on, and it's just crammed in there to the max, to the height, to every corner that can be done. We're gonna have other people talking and commenting on other things about the traffic. The last thing I think I wanted to talk about was, again, like I said, just the view that's being obstructed. And I'm gonna leave everybody with something to think about, something to probably remember it, this meeting by, and it goes something like this. Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've lost till it's gone? Pave paradise, put up a parking lot. In our case, they put up a 93,000-square-foot concrete building.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. If I mess up, as I'm likely to do on names, please vociferously correct me when you get to the microphone.
Mark Rogge, and you got my name exactly right. That was a miracle. I, I just wanted to give you another perspective on this. I've worked in municipal management for over 30 years. I've been a city engineer and in charge of development sections, and done a lot of work in this Bay Area, and of course, I love Los Gatos, I love the jazz and the plaza, I love this, you know, the, Los Gatos Creek Trail and everything else. And you have an issue of balance here, because you want to maintain that charm of the town, and it's very important. One of the things that I look at this project, though, is that you have sometimes jobs over here, and housing way over here, and you have those long commutes that nobody likes. And the idea of having the jobs right in the neighborhood is a really good planning thing. One thing I was very impressed with is, I looked at the staff's work on this, and I initially just wanted to review it lightly, and then I really got into it, and I really want to praise your town staff. They have done a very thorough job on this project, and I think that is a real testament to what the town is doing, to the leadership in the town, and to the town staff. The information that's provided, and the outreach, and everything that was done, I think is really good. So some of the things I like about this project is that, instead of having the sea of asphalt, which we don't like, put all that parking underground. One thing I'd like to caution you about, though, is that the town ordinance requires parking at four per thousand square feet of building. And in looking at towns like this in the Bay Area, as opposed to nationwide averages, where the property values are such that you can have call centers and things like that, their actual parking rates are closer to anywhere in a shared parking environment to 2.25 per thousand, to three per thousand. And three per thousand is significantly lower than the four per thousand that the town requires. And I understand here, again, you have the balance. On the one hand, you don't want parking spilling out into neighbors. On the other hand, you want to encourage alternate modes of transportation, you want people to get on their bikes and walk to work, and those sorts of things. And so I think the safety improvements that are being done here to provide better pedestrian and bike access is great. I think the idea of putting the bicycle lockers in the building and the showers, because I was involved in design of a city hall in one city where we didn't have that access, and although we were encouraging people to come to work in their bikes, they wanted to take a shower before they came to work. So that, I think, was a lot of really good things, but again, I think, great kudos to the town staff for doing a great job, and the thoroughness of all of these reports, and the accuracy, and the high level of professionalism. I, I really want to commend you for that. Thank you very much.
Questions for the speaker? I have one. You didn't give us your address, sir.
Oh, Terrace Drive.
Thank you. Coming up next, I have Raymond Tony, Kristen McFarland-Werner, and John Middlestead.
Thank you very much for having us. I'm a resident of Los Gatos for many, many years, and live on Alberta Way. The factor that I wanted to bring up, and I'll be very short, is the safety factor. Alberta Way is a funnel. You have all these folks living there, we have 110 individual units at Los Gatos Commons, plus all the other homes that are in there, and the only way out is through Alberta Way up to Los Gatos Saratoga Boulevard. One of the problems, and I, I have this worry about safety, not only for our residents on Alberta Way, but also for the potential tenants of that place. You have a parking garage with 390 spaces, and only one way in and way out. I know they say there's two, but actually, there's only one area where there's an in-and-out, an egress and an ingress. To get 390 people... To get 390 people or even 30% or 75% of that in-and-out, that's gonna be a very, very difficult position if there's a fire or an earthquake or even just normally going in-and-out for lunch or for dinner, whatever. The only other thing I can comment as, as a simile is downtown Los Gatos, you folks approved the Safeway store and the Safeway store has 122 underground parking spaces, but it sits on a corner and there are two ingresses and egresses out of that place. So if there's a problem on one, you can go out the other. That's the problem. Secondarily, for anyone who lives on Alberto Way, as they say, it's a funnel, you can't get out of there if everybody decided to leave at once, the only other alternative is the road that goes up to Bella Vista. Now, that is a fire road to be used by a fire department, but they have it locked off, gated, and you cannot get through there. So in the event we had to get out, there's just no way except getting out Alberto Way. This is too much traffic for a little Alberto Way. Thank you.
Thank you. Up, up. Now that would upset the mayor. Not me yet, but let's not have displays of affection, please. No, I lost my place. Who's next? John Middlestead. Kristen McFarland-Werner. John Middlestead.
Yes, the, yes, I'm John Middlestead. I live at 443 Alberta Way. I'm also the president of the Homeowners Association at Los Gatos Commons. And I know that there will be a lot of, a lot more comments about the traffic, both during construction and after construction is finished. I'm not as concerned. If they can get it done in 14 months, what happens during construction except, you know, and they say they're mitigating the dust that's gonna be occurring, but if, if you think about the traffic and in the neighborhood discussion, they indicated, and I agree, that the bulk of the traffic coming in is gonna be along Highway 17 and it's gonna get off at, at that Los Gatos East exit and come down to where they've added eight more, room for eight more cars to turn left into Alberta Way and come into this driveway. And they estimate from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM is the peak morning time. I'm not concerned about evening. I think in evening time, when they leave, most of that traffic's gonna go back on 17. There's not much traffic coming down Los Gatos, from Los Gatos Boulevard at that time of day. So the evening, I'm not concerned about. In the morning, when that left turn light comes on, it's gonna impact people from Los Gatos Boulevard getting onto 17. It's also, as they're turning in, gonna impact our ability to get out in the morning. And some of us still have jobs to go to. I remember them saying that the traffic study indicated an impact of one car per minute during the peak periods. If there are 390 cars in there and you've got a two-hour period to empty those, that's at least three cars per minute during that two-hour period. It's not one car per minute. Arithmetic won't get you there. So what I'd like to consider is, is there a way, if this project goes forward, and I'm not saying that it will, to route the incoming traffic back around the back of the building and into the garage here so that there's only traffic moving circularly in and out of that garage? I know Caltrans would probably have a lot of concerns because this isn't access to 17, but if you pulled off right here, a long, a long driveway, it won't impact the traffic here because people turning left-
Thank you, Mr. Middlestead.
Either come this way or they're gonna come back here.
Let's see if there are questions of staff.
Would be no impact to that.
Your time expired. Are there questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hudes.
This is an interesting idea and I wonder if there, if the residents or anyone has had any communications with Caltrans about the possibility of wrapping that.
I'd like to perhaps talk to Jesse Pugh about this at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before our next speaker, we're going to take a short 10-minute break. Thank you. To order, please. Our next three speakers will be Susan Khan, Jennifer Leepthall, sorry, and Richard Vacarello.
Hi. I'm Susan Khan. I'm not feeling well because I've had a leak in my house, but I was just gonna listen, but this is really tough. I've been, live at 435 Alberta Way and lived there over 20 years and I'm a 40-year-plus resident and my family's lived in Los Gatos for over 45 years. And there's a lot of reasons why this affects me and the residents of Alberto Way. I work from home. I will have a horrible experience during the construction time and afterwards with all the people coming by. The entrance and exit to the parking garage is right near our border. We have 21 children, 19 of which run around, ride bikes, ride scooters. It's very difficult to control children, even if the parents are there. You all probably have some or know some and they just don't listen. So there's gonna be a lot of people getting run over on the street, not just pedestrians, bicyclists, but also people getting in accidents. I've driven down Highway 9 for, you know, since I was 16 and I almost get rear-ended every single time I drive down Highway 9 going down towards the freeway. If you're not careful, you put your breakers on, even if there's a light, people will run right into you. Now that people are texting and driving, you're gonna have a huge problem with traffic. Not only is this a traffic problem for Alberto Way, but it affects the entire town of Los Gatos. If you live, wanna come, if you're a patron, if you're a business owner, yeah, you might get some people buying more things downtown, but you'll get a lot of congestion. People won't want to go into Los Gatos because it's no fun to drive there now. It took me about 15 minutes to go to a two-minute drive to get to a vet in an emergency. Now imagine with 393 cars, not including busing, if you're talking about busing in or construction, how are people in the whole town supposed to live with congestion? And yes, there's, there's traffic times, seven to nine, there's lunch, let's not forget lunch, there's 11 to 1, 11 to 2, and then people go home at night. Well, I do things in the evenings. My residents in the neighborhood have all different schedules, but for me, it's a pretty big thing if I want to get out during different times of the day. And so it is, yes, affects everybody in Alberto Way, but it's, it's a town problem. It's a, if you want to avoid Highway 9 or you're trying to get into Alberto Way, now you're gonna have to go on Los Gatos Boulevard, North Santa Cruz, it's the whole town problem. So it's not just Alberto Way, it's Highway 17. It's anybody that goes to school in Los Gatos in the morning, it's anybody that comes home from work. You're now gonna be avoiding all the people finding in-and-out on one entrance and one exit. It's, it's not a through street, it comes in and out, you know, and in-and-out near our, our border. Is that me?
That's you. Thank you. Jennifer, help me.
It's Leepthall.
Thank you.
Thank you. 420 Alberta Way. I'm gonna speak somewhat quickly because I have so many things to say. Sorry. So I wanted to first thank the planning staff and commission for working with not only developers, but also being willing to listen to the public input on this. I know that you've put in a lot of time and effort. I have a huge problem with how immense this building is in height and in just general square footage. I as well, from my condo, have this view here and I say this view, I mean this view of this lovely hill that will completely go away if this building is built. I'm not really concerned about just my view alone, just the magnitude of this building is way too big for this neighborhood. It's too tall. They say, oh, well, you know, the current building is, I think, 35 feet high or maybe 33 or something. But if you really look at the building, it's a very small portion of the building that peaks up, that's that high and the rest is much, much lower. And maybe it's just me, I'd rather see an asphalt parking lot than this huge building in this space, to be honest with you. I actually worked at Cisco and at Google and I can tell you that when I was working at both those places, and maybe it was just my division, but we didn't have a lot of people telecommuting. And one thing that was said, I went to these meetings with the developers and they said at one point, "We could get a company like Google in here." And I thought, "I don't want a Google in here." I mean, really? Do we want a Google this close to downtown? But that might be what we're asking for in approving this building. Because in the end, the developer can't control who goes into this building, what they do in the building, right? So a lot, a lot of the comments they've made were assumptions about, you know, people shopping downtown, right? These companies using catering from Los Gatos. If Google went in here, they wouldn't do that. They have a catering company themselves they use and it's not a Los Gatos catering company. So I think there's a lot of things, a lot of words that can, I'm not a good word person, I'm not good with words, I wish I was better at it. There's a lot of ways to spend things with words and I think there's a lot of spinning going on. And I know that there's a lot for you guys to go through and everything that we're saying and they're saying, but I think for this neighborhood, bigger just really isn't better. Right now, when you walk through, the neighborhood's really airy and you can walk and see the sun when you're walking on, on the sidewalks and you won't be able to do that anymore. You're gonna be lost in shadows when you go past this development. So I hope that you guys all take this into consideration. Any questions?
Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hudes.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate the arguments that being made about the, the work and residential location. I was intrigued by your comment that you, you said you thought you did not want to see a Google in this location. Could you expand on that a little bit? Was it, you know, that company in particular or was it that type of company or what was the, what was that related, particularly related to this idea of having work close to residences?
So companies like, and I, I worked at Google, I loved Google, I loved working there, I loved working there in Mountain View. If you look at the Google campus in Mountain View, it's a, it's a business campus, right? It's a building, campus of buildings, right? It's not set up in a residential neighborhood. Also, these companies, they do bus people in sometimes. I actually took the Google buses from Los Gatos to Google and I can't tell you how many residents were pissed off about those buses coming into Los Gatos and the same thing would happen here, right? They're living in a neighborhood, people were living in a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood. And right now, there is a building there that's a business building, but it's a much smaller building and for many, many years, it's been possibly not at full capacity, but even when it was, it was with small companies with a small amount of people, you know, chiropractors and, you know, maybe, you know, a law, a small law office, right? If you get a Google in here, it's, they do do bullpining, right, in those companies and they don't have as many telecommuters as people think. So there was a lot of conversation about telecommuters. When I worked at Google, only 1% of my group telecommuted.
Follow-up, so summarize, your concern is about the intensity of activity that would occur if a company like that were to come in to that location?
That, but I would say my top concern is actually just the mass and size of this building in general. I think it's just way too big for the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Richard Vacarello, followed by Melanie Kemp, Louis Darin, and Marietta Reine.
Hi, my name is Richard Vacarello. I live at 182 Questa de Los Gatos Way, which is Bella Vista. So I have attended the, a few of the community outreach or open houses that the developers had. I also attended the staff review. In all of these occasions, I express my concern. Now I have some experience in this. Certainly, most of my career, I've owned temporary employment services throughout the Silicon Valley. I currently work for an online media company. However, I have been a developer too and I express this to Randy. I have built in Carmel, commercial buildings, homes in Carmel, homes in San Jose and Groveland, California also. My concern, I'm not trying to be an obstructionist, I'm all in favor, that's fine, build the building, but the mass and size and the amount of people and cars in, that will be coming in and out of a road that has one access is way too large. And I've asked Randy to, to please modify the plan and work with the residents. And I want to state this before I get into the specifics. In the last outreach meeting that I had, I walked into the room and Randy decided to give me the sales pitch again. I don't think he knew that I had been to these other meetings. What he has told you about working with the residents is false. That's the reason why you have so many people here. I asked him if he had made any modifications or changes to this building based on the, the input of the residents. This is his exact words and I have witnesses, okay? So I, I asked him, "Have you had any modifications since the meeting or talked with the residents in the area?" Randy said, "No." I said, "Why don't you work with the, the residents to get this thing passed? I'm all in favor of working, but I have a problem with the mass." He said, quote, "I don't care and I don't give a damn about the residents and I'm gonna build it anyway." That's what he said, all right? So you have a flavor and I have a witness here, somebody I had never met. I, when I walked in the room, had no idea who she is, she's sitting over here and can validate the story. That is the problem that we have. So I have a concern about, basically very quickly, the street is so small, it's a few hundred yards long. We have a massive office complex in the cul-de-sac. We have four condominium complexes there. Then we have a hotel that's been renovated and now a lot of people going in and out of that, a new restaurant, a medical building, and now a building that is three times the size. When is there enough? The traffic is outrageous right now.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you. Melanie Kemp?
Hi, I'm Melanie Kemp. I live at 174 Questa de Los Gatos Way in the Bella Vista Village Development. I'm here also because I'm very, very concerned with, with two major aspects of this project. I also have attended two of the neighborhood meetings that they have had. Randy Lamb and his partner Shane were both there at those meetings. I will repeat with Rick that we did voice concerns for size, mass, and traffic and we were told there wasn't going to be much change except they were going to be putting in two right-hand lane turns. Well, we already supposedly have two lanes that turn right and I still, in trying to leave my home at the end of the day, can never turn right on red because there is never sufficient space to do that. Now, as I understand, that road isn't being widened at all. They're just trying to accommodate three lanes, so I don't know how that's gonna work. My bigger concern with trafficking is what is going to happen when you have backed-up traffic from this lane now that supposedly the left-turn lane with the light is now supposed to have eight spaces? Well, you're not allowing more cars to go in except you're just holding all other traffic now so those eight cars can turn in. You're gonna have more traffic backing up on Santa Cruz Avenue, on University Avenue, and even Los Gatos Avenue. I know one of the major reasons that the commercial project, that the Alberta Oaks commercial, big buildings at the end of the street were rejected- Commercial, big buildings at the end of the street were rejected, was because we have very small ingress egress there. And if it was rejected, that project, Alberta Oaks, from major housing development back there because of trafficking concerns, this is even higher density than that one was, and that was disapproved. So, it just doesn't make any sense to me. The size and the mass, you know, I heard with great concern how this very diligent planning commission here was looking at Raid Avenue that was approved an hour and a half ago, and the shadow line that it might cast on one or two buildings that might be in back of it. And yet, this massive arbitrage is going to be casting a huge shadow on the entire street. And it's not in keeping with the neighborhood. If you want like-kind property, go take a building like this and put it out on Lark Avenue, put it out on Winchester where Netflix is. They can bring their buses in from San Francisco, and they're bringing six buses in, I really don't care as much because that whole neighborhood over there is commercial. This isn't. It's residential. We'd like to keep it that way. Please.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Melanie Kemp? That was Melanie Kemp. Louis Darin? Darrow?
I'm a resident of 449 Alberta Way. I work as a project manager in helping architecture projects. I'm currently working on a project of 96,000 square feet, similar project, underground parking. Just to let you know, you haven't heard the whole story from the developer. Underground parking, when we poured the parking lot, we had excavation, we had 300 and some odd trucks, dump trucks, going in and out of the site, destroying the street, getting dust and dirt all over the place. There's no circulation for that number of trucks to get out. Concrete has to get poured, 80-ton concrete trucks. They destroyed the road, it's too much weight. They have to have huge cranes to dump the concrete, noise, activity, the street closure. You have 380 trucks coming in and out of that site, impossible. And if it's not possible, they close the street down. Those are just some of the things you're not being told, okay? The scale of this building is wrong for the site, it's too massive. You know, I could give you a list of things, I like to ride bicycles. I can't ride my bike downtown anymore because of the four curb cuts going into 17. You add 390 cars, and no one's going to ride a bike. You talk about putting a turn lane in there. The developers said they're going to put a turn lane, right-hand lane. They also read the Caltrain report, they're going to put a bike lane. How are you going to put a bike lane and two turn lanes, and you've got 17 feet, and you're going to divide that in two and make two turn lanes, make another lane on the other side? The math doesn't work on that, you can't do it, okay? And if you put a bike lane there, it's a death trap because how's cars going to get on 17, people are going to cross? Not a chance, it's not going to happen. The other thing is, you guys have something called a conditional use permit, and planning commission has some control over this. And I think you guys really have to take a look at that. Now, if you had a mother or father living on Alberta Way, can you honestly say you'd want this project to go through? If you guys lived in Alberta Way, would you want this project to go through? This is what you residents, you're representing the people here. I certainly don't want it to go through. The guy came up and said, "No exceptions to this." Yet, he says the building's 35-foot high, but, "Oh, there's an exception, we're going to put a tower in the front, 37-feet high." And then, they didn't tell you what they put on the roof when they put RH and stuff like that, and antennas on the roof, just to obstruct the view some more, and lighting on the roof, and all the other things that go to disrupt the whole area of views. There's just a lot of emotion in the room, you can see all the people here, and people have a lot of concern, okay? And you guys can do the right thing. You put a senior community there, and I give you guys credit, you did some Los Gatos, a place where people want to live. It's a place where people come to live who work in Silicon Valley. There's no value bringing Silicon Valley into Los Gatos. As a matter of fact, it diminishes what is Los Gatos. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Please, please, please. Sir, we have a question for you. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you for your presentation. I had a question, you mentioned that you don't ride your bike. Does anyone that lives on Alberta Way now ride their bike into downtown?
I ride my bike, but I stopped riding. I can't ride downtown, I can't get past the curb cuts. And once you do, the thing I didn't say, and if you'll excuse me, going into a parking lot with 390 cars...
Bike.
I'm sorry. Going with 390 cars, there is an emissions problem too, because you have to start and stop going up the lot. There's a stacking problem. I'm working on a project now that they have a massive stacking project, problem with cars coming in and out of the garage, and I have three exits to the street, and it's a developed site, and it's a commercial area. This is a residential area, you're all coming into a pinch point. 390 cars, it's only a matter of time when you're going to have the accident that closes a street that's going to cause a lawsuit for you guys, because it's... Somebody hired a traffic study, and if I hired a traffic study, they would do exactly what I wanted them to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Marietta Reine, followed by Bob Burke, Loretta Fowler, and Pat Lynch.
My name is Marietta Reine, and I live at 449 Alberta Way. I'm not going to address any environmental impact reports or traffic studies or setbacks. The Los Gatos Building and Planning Department's stated goal is to help, quote, "ensure the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens and property owners." The proposed project for 401-405 Alberta Way does not comply with this goal. The detrimental impact this development will have on all residents of Los Gatos, and specifically the Alberta Way residents, has largely been downplayed. As a resident of the Los Gatos Commons condos, condos, a senior independent living community, I would like to speak for the majority of the seniors who reside there and who oppose this project. As stated in our petition, the traffic congestion and density during demolition, excavation, construction, and occupancy will impede emergency vehicles trying to reach residents to provide quick response to medical emergencies, and if needed, provide timely transportation to medical facilities. The Los Gatos Commons condos receives an average of 7.75 calls and responses per month. This statistic is based on the last two years of recorded calls and was provided by Kendra Randolph in operations at the Santa Clara County Fire Department. Extensive delays and gridlock at the intersection of Alberta Way and Los Gatos-Seratoga Boulevard will make it difficult for residents to get to medical appointments on time and result in missed monitoring of medical issues. The increase in air and noise pollution for all the neighbors in close proximity to the Alberta Way project will likely experience an exacerbation of already compromised health issues, specifically those with respiratory conditions, chronic illness, or post-op recovery. This will be impacted. I would also remind you that in an emergency that calls for evacuation, the construction at the end point of Alberta Way could be an impediment to a safe and speedy escape. This project has an anticipated timeline of two years, start to finish. Is this realistic? Two years was the timeline that we were told at the outreach meeting. Would any of the planning commissioners want their elderly parents who may have compromised health placed in this environment for two years?
Thank you, Ms. Reine.
Thank you.
Questions for the speaker? Thank you. Bob Burke?
Hi, Commissioners, I'm Bob Burke, I live at 420 Alberto. I'd like to start by saying that the proposed development doesn't conform to the 2020 general plan in Sections 2 Vision, 3 Land Use, 4 Community Design and Transportation. Having said that, I'm going to focus principally on transportation in my comments. The assumptions used by the applicant in every possible assumption that's been picked are selected to minimize the apparent impact on the traffic in the area. Now, we all know, especially in the morning, the AM rush on 9 between Santa Cruz Avenue and Los Gatos Boulevard is terrible. People are taking their children to school, the older kids are driving themselves to the high school. It causes congestion that is, it backs up traffic, particularly on eastbound Los Gatos-Seratoga Boulevard, up into the bridge area. Now, the exit of the bridge is a one-lane, is a one-lane direction, there's one lane in the eastbound direction at the exit of the bridge. That causes gridlock that presently backs up traffic every morning, and will back it up not only on 17, but further to block EMS and the fire department from being able to rescue anybody on Alberta Way. And it's already happened. Next, to address some of the other assumptions, and by the way, if you've read the report that I put together, then I don't have to go over the errors and omissions in the traffic report submitted by the applicant. There were many of them. I could just tell you an anecdotal one. There's a couple of tables that show the exits from 17 to eastbound Los Gatos-Seratoga Boulevard, Highway 9, in the morning. The table adds up to around 2,300, well, 2,372 eastbound vehicles. However, the applicant shows that only 887 eastbound vehicles actually arrive at the intersection of Alberta Way on eastbound 9. And there are several other missing, missing or erred figures in that report. There are no studies of the intersections of 9 and 17 or Lark.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Thank you.
Great. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hootis?
I appreciate your focus on the traffic, and had one question about that. Does the current situation with beach traffic, Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, does that impact Highway 9 and that area in your experience? And was that considered in the traffic report that you've read?
Wasn't considered at all. The report that I put together only addressed the AM and P, the normal AM and PM rush hours. The weekends are not addressed at all.
In your experience, living there, is there an issue with?
Yes, there is, there is an issue in that exits from 17 to 9 can't happen, and southbound entrances get backed up from 9 to 17 South.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Loretta Fowler?
Hello, I live at 451 Alberta Way in the Los Gatos Commons condos. The majority in this senior restricted condo development oppose the Alberta Way project. The project would introduce 390 cars into the Alberta Way cul-de-sac, which will increase air pollution in the neighborhood. As they wait to clear signals, cars will idle at intersections on Los Gatos-Seratoga Road, and they will idle at the Alberta Way intersection. As the environmental impact report pointed out, there will be queues on the ramps to Highway 17 and on the Los Gatos-Seratoga Road, and these queues will require up to three or more signal cycles to clear. Automobile exhaust and gas vapors from 390 cars during the AM and PM rush will add to the current level of pollution. So, air pollution concentrates from vehicles contribute to reduced lung capacity, inflammation of lung airways, aggravation of asthma, increased susceptibility to respiratory illness, chest pain for those with heart problems, and reduced mental alertness, especially for the elderly, chronically or acutely ill persons, and children. In its air quality section, the EIR concluded, and I'm quoting here, "The project is inconsistent with the 2010 Clean Air Plan, less than significant with mitigation." Further, the EIR study did not measure localized pollution, rather, it evaluated regional levels of pollution. No attempt was made to actually estimate the level of pollutants that would be produced by the introduction of 390 vehicles to the Alberta Way neighborhood. So, how can we evaluate the mitigation that would be necessary? What mitigation is considered sufficient by the EIR? Well, first, four charging stations for cars. But how many of the 390 cars will be electric? We cannot know, but surely not most of them. The mitigation also would include encouraging the tenant to voluntarily support ride-sharing, public transit, cycling, and walking to work. Actually, we cannot know that this would happen. So, the mitigations supported by the EIR do not appear at all adequate to deal with the health problems 390 cars would bring. Seniors at the Los Gatos Commons already have health issues. 390 cars would increase the risk to their health. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Pat Lynch, followed by Ben Roxborough, Catherine Azad, and Roman Ruvenov.
I'm Pat Lynch. I am the controller for CWA Realty and the property manager, leasing agent for the property in question. I have been on the site for 30 years. We bought the buildings in 1986 to house our software development company in the 401 building. We sold that company in the early 2000, and we have remained on the property as we own the property for our own purposes. We are not a real estate company by choice. It was a place we bought after being in four different buildings as we were growing. The buildings were built 50 years ago. They were built primarily to be a shopping center. They are in a town and country format. That is why there is a lower section of this building that was intended, we believe, to be storage for inventory or retail space on the other two floors. That in and of itself is very difficult to deal with for office buildings. The spaces are chopped up, they are small, they are not contiguous. The infrastructure is 50 years old. Trying to even bring the electrical and the plumbing into this century is more difficult than you can believe. The buildings are connected below ground. It is impossible to replace a building at a time and do the things that need to be done to these buildings. They are not ADA compliant, and there is no way to make them ADA compliant. They weathered the '89 Loma Prieta earthquake, but I wouldn't guarantee that they're going to weather the next one, okay? I've heard a lot of talk about the amount of cars going in and out with the new proposal. There's a lot of cars that go in and out of our parking lot already. We have small clients who have a lot of people who come to see them, whether they're chiropractors, attorneys, everything you can imagine. I would bet, and I don't have time to sit and count them all day, but I've been on the grounds for 30 years, and I spent a lot of time there, there's a lot more cars coming in and out of our complex right now. If they put in the kind of tenant who has people coming in to work, who stay to work and leave at the end of the day, the chances are that the car traffic could actually be less than what we have going in and out right now. That's just with our tenants. We are also subject to everybody who is lost in space, who comes off the freeway with whatever kind of vehicle they've got, that semi-trucks with lord knows what on them coming through our driveway.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Ben Roxborough?
Ben Roxborough, owner at 420 Alberto Way. The thing about common sense is that sometimes it's not too common, and this is really case in point. And when we... And when we look at the 2020 plan, general plan, of this community, that this community put in place, we see an incongruency between basically what this development is proposing and what those guidelines prepare. And I think it's vitally important that we really look at those guidelines right now. And the first one that really struck me, I won't talk too much about the traffic, but most residential streets, quote-unquote, in Los Gatos are designed to discourage through traffic. It's not happening here. Aesthetics, height, and density. This is a quote, again, from the general plan. "The town has created and maintained an attractively built environment through careful attention design of buildings, landscaping, public improvement, and preservation of natural environment." We've talked about solar access, we've seen solar access from number two, we're now at number three. If we look at that, we look at heavy, significant discrepancies with respect to solar access to residents at 420 Alberto Way. And finally, I won't address all the points in the 2020 general plan, but noise is defined as a sound or a series of sounds that are considered to be invasive, irritating, objectionable -- this is quoting directly from the 2020 general plan -- and/or disruptive to the quality of daily life. Noise varies in range and volume and can originate from individual incidents such as construction equipment, sporadic disturbances, dot, dot, dot. I can keep going. But we just ask the question, given the proximity and the density of this specific development, how on earth is this development conforming with that specific qualitative, dare I say, requirement that the 2020 general plan has put in place? It just doesn't. And if anyone even attempts to say that it conforms with that, they're really twisting certain facts and distorting those facts in a way that's beyond any form of reasonable belief. So, I'm grateful for the time that you've afforded us tonight. I think there is a real concern within the community, but most importantly, if there's one thing I walk away with now, is look and concentrate on the principles that we've articulated in the 2020 general plan. And I think that is one way of moving forward.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker. I have one. Would you clarify what you meant by the plan discourages drive-through traffic?
No, I'm just quoting from the 2020 general plan, and it says, "Most residential streets in Los Gatos are designed to discourage through traffic." And so, I can't see how this plan is consistent with that. It's actually encouraging 350 vehicles.
That's what I'm getting at. What is drive-through traffic?
I'm just quoting your own 2020 plan, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, thank you very much. Catherine Azad.
Hi there. I live on 420 Alberto Way, right across the street from this monstrosity. My view is also here as this. So, I will also be--
Would you make that comment again on the mic?
Oh, yes. So, I will also be losing my view, but my concerns are, when they were working on the project for the renovation of the motel, as well as the new restaurant, which is right next door to our complex, quite a few times, just trying to get to Highway 9, Los Gatos-Saratoga -- well, Highway 9, I would have to wait for 15, 20 minutes because there was no traffic going either way. We could not even get out. And my thought was, I know of two or three pregnant girls just in my complex, let alone the commons, how is an emergency vehicle going to get in here? It would be impossible if there's no through traffic at all because they're working and stopping us. How about if I had an emergency? I had five cars in front of me. It would be impossible to get out. So, that's a scary thought. Now, they were talking about how the technology is going to be in this building, and it could possibly be a lot of people being there. Are they going to be working 24 hours a day? Are there going to be stipulations on work hours? What if they are like a Google campus, or a Netflix, or Yahoo? That is going to definitely impede on our residential area. 309 parking spaces. Now, I know even on our street during the weekend, people will drop one car off and take off in another with a group of people. So, we have strange cars already parked on our street. What are you guys going to do with the parking on the weekends? Are there going to be security there? Is it something that we're going to have to worry about? Because it's already hard to find parking in Los Gatos as it is. So, once people find out, there's now 309 parking spaces underground on Alberto Way. We'll be impacted by that also on the weekend, as well as just the traffic of trying to get to and from local places. It took me 20 minutes just to try to get to the post office a couple of weekends ago, and I had to turn around. And even there was a problem with an emergency vehicle trying to get through, and they couldn't. So, what are you going to do on our little street? We're not even a main street in Los Gatos.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker. Thank you very much. Roman Ruvanov, followed by Paul Gundatra, Timothy Lynch, and Sheri Burke.
Hello? Can you guys hear me? Yeah, all right. So, my name is Roman. I live at 435 Alberto Way, and I will concentrate on one main thing. I have small children, okay? We live on this side of the street. There is no stoplights, there is no traffic lights on this street except one, which is on a corner with Highway 9. For us to go to school, the only way out is along this road, along Alberto Way. Wait for the traffic light, and then go up to the hill, okay? Now, imagine 400 cars approximately coming in the morning, say, in two hours, that's car for every 15 seconds. So, every 15 seconds, there will be a car turning left, subject to control by the traffic light, then turning left again into the parking structure, okay? How is it possible that children can cross the traffic here, you know, the ingress and egress from the parking structure? They have to go here to the traffic light, where again, they're met with the same 400 cars, you know, spread over two hours. It's becoming impossible to get to the school. And unfortunately, as you know, Alberto Way has no other way out. We don't have any other way out to send our children to school without dealing with all this additional traffic. The only way out is locked. What is the name of this small street which goes up? It has a fire, whatever. It's actually locked. There is no way out. All right? During the construction, the trucks will be coming. As the construction engineer indicated, it will be whatever. 400 trucks need to come in and to dig this underground parking. Construction cars are that high. My children are that high. How are the construction guys going to see small children? Again, 400 trucks coming in a matter of whatever, one year, two years, the trucks are bigger than children. Children not always see the trucks. We are asking for trouble just with the traffic alone. Other things were already addressed by the previous speakers, and specifically, access for emergency and fire vehicles. We have elderly community, which requires fast access of emergency vehicles. Otherwise, they may be dead. Okay? So, as is. All right? So, these are my primary concerns, and I think this project is need to significantly scale down, as well as to address the fact, how we're going to deal with children, because we cannot cross the street. There is no stoplights. People are speeding down. There is no bumps. There is only one intersection where we can cross the street, and to get to that, we have to deal with 400 cars, twice. So, that's my concern.
Thank you, sir. Questions for the speaker. Thank you. Paul Gundatra?
Yes, Paul Gundatra. I won't repeat many of the comments that's already been made. I agree with most of the opposition, but I wanted to make an observation. First of all, in 50 years, this is my first meeting to oppose any construction or attend any meetings. One of the observations I made was that you guys spent 30 minutes asking all kinds of questions on construction for that two-story house, even though there was no opposition at all. Here, there's so much opposition, and I got the feeling from your staff that didn't even care to attend any of the meetings. That tells me you guys have already worked, the staff has already agreed, that this project should go ahead with all this much opposition. Just ask yourself one question. If your parents lived there, would you want this much traffic in that one street-only way out? That's all I'm asking. Just ask your conscience. Would you allow this kind of construction if your parents lived in the older home community? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Thank you. Timothy Lynch?
Hi, my name's Tim Lynch. I am the facilities manager of the current buildings. We watch people come across our property all the time, walking, walking their dogs, and all this kind of thing. Kids riding their bikes in there. Signs mean nothing. People will do what they want to do wherever they want to do it. And so, they're talking about safety for their kids. They're not very safe right now. Okay? Now, as far as traffic, I've been going in and out of those buildings for over 25 years. I have only had one incident where I could not come into that building comfortably. Now, it's because it was an accident at the crossroads, where somebody pulled across the street and got broadsided. Okay? I've been able to come in and out of those buildings at any time of day and night, and have been doing it for over 25 years, and I've had no one time have I had to wait any longer than one or two car lengths.
Mr. Lynch, you need to address your comments to the commission.
Okay. One or two car lengths to get out. No problems at all getting in or out. So, they keep referring to this number of 390 cars. They're forgetting that there's already 200 and some parking places in our structure now. So, they're not 395 more cars coming in, there's already 200 and some parking places there at this time. So, you're not tripling it, you're not all that kind of thing that keeps being referred to. The numbers just keep getting thrown out there, and I don't understand them. You know what I mean? What else would I like to address? Speeding up and down the road. They're talking about safety of their kids. The hardest thing getting in and out of our parking lot now is the third driveway. You come out, you have to look both ways because you don't know which way the cars are going to come and get you at, because there's cars parked on both sides of the driveway itself. The cars that are speeding down are coming from the units that are down the street, not from our complex or from the complex that they're presenting to build. They're coming down the street, and we have to watch out to make sure we don't get broadsided trying to get out of the parking lot now. So, I see that the safety issue is, the more cars you have, sometimes it slows people down. And I think people go too fast right now. By slowing things down, there's actually more safety involved. Laugh all you like.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Wait, we have a question. Commissioner Hootis.
Yeah, thank you. Sometimes I get accused of being a numbers guy, but I find data to be very helpful in these things. Could you tell me how many parking places there are now?
Not exactly. I don't know that exactly, but I can refer to-- Wrong. You're wrong.
Okay. So, let me continue. I'm asking the question here.
My sister's the manager, she would know the number, though.
So, if you'd like to provide that information, we'd be happy to see that. Also, do you have any data on how many cars enter and exit the parking lot now and the general timeframes when that traffic occurs?
No, I left that up to the professionals that did the study. All I know is from practical experience, because I come and go there four or five times a day.
Okay, thank you.
And have been doing it for years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lynch. Sheri Burke.
My name is Sheri Burke, and I live at 420 Alberto Way, directly across from the office complex. I'm opposed to the current proposed development for these reasons. I feel the increase in the square footage from the existing buildings to the new buildings is massive, and I believe the new buildings will be out of character for our neighborhood and our small town. The current buildings are nicely set back from the street, the new ones won't be. I feel the new development will bring more traffic during the building phases, as well as after completion when the tenants move in. Traffic will be heavily congested on Alberto Way, Los Gatos-Saratoga Road, Highway 17, Los Gatos Boulevard, University Avenue, Santa Cruz Avenue, and I'm sure other streets. Concerned that the existing traffic studies may not have taken into account the heavier traffic encountered when school is in session. The driveway that I use to enter our complex is directly across the street from the development and before the entrance to the underground garage. So, I worry that in the AM hours, I'm going to have to turn left out of our driveway directly in front of a steady stream of cars on Alberto Way headed for the entrance to their garage, and in the PM hours, I have to turn left and then merge in on the right with the steady stream of traffic exiting from the underground garage. So, I'm not sure I'm ever going to get out, at least not safely. I am concerned about parking on our streets for ourselves and our guests. Street parking is limited. It's been impacted by Grill 57 that recently opened, and it will be impacted even more with this proposed development. While the construction is ongoing, we'll have more construction workers parking on our street. After construction, a portion of the street that we now park our cars on will be rezoned with no parking. So, I'm concerned that there's going to be enough parking available for us. So, for all of these reasons, I ask that you vote no on the current proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker. Commissioner Hootis.
I'm not positive, but I believe that some parking spaces are proposed to be eliminated on the street.
That's correct, yes.
Are those spaces currently used by residents or, in your experience, by people who are doing business in the business center now?
In my experience, it's primarily residences, especially in the evening. During the daylight hours, there may be some parking there for people that are going to the businesses, but in the evening, it's been, prior to the restaurant, it's been primarily used by the residences.
Thank you very much. Paulette Soto, Sergey Milnik, and Jean-Paul Nunez.
Hi, my name is Paulette Soto. I live at 420 Alberto Way, right across the street. I've been there for about a year, so not that long, but I moved from the East Coast because I found it to be very quiet and beautiful in this area. And I appreciate Mr. Lamb's company saying that he's conscientious and has listened to the residents, but I don't believe that's true. I have to agree with the man with the blue and purple shirt. There hasn't been enough receptivity and communication between the residents and the company. I don't believe that at all. Another thing I wanted to bring up was that this building, 35 to 39 feet, is only two stories. If you look at the pictures, the building that's there now, I understand that the first floor is sunken, but it's two floors now, and it's considerably lower than what he's proposing. It looks-- It looks very large, what he's proposing, and it's just daunting for such a small street. Another person, I forget who, mentioned before that this is great for people in the town, they can work and live in the same town. I really don't believe that's the case. I don't think that's going to happen, and I think most people are going to end up having to commute. There is no Caltrain in Los Gatos, and therefore, they're all going to be driving. So, we've gone over and over and over about the traffic, and I'm not going to reiterate that, but the traffic will be very bad because there's not any mass transit in the area because Los Gatos is a small town, and they probably rejected it. I'm familiar with some of his work. I work in Los Altos. I'm a schoolteacher of middle school, Egan, and I'm familiar with one of the buildings that he has there. And it is a very nice building, but it's also on a major street. It's not on a cul-de-sac, a dead-end street. So, there's plenty of outlets for people to come in and out of the building. So, that's really what I wanted to say, but I'm most concerned about the fact that he hasn't had a lot of support from the community, and there's been a lot of claims that he has discussed at length, which I don't believe is true. So, thank you for your time.
Let me see if there's any questions for the Speaker. Seeing none, thank you. As I said earlier, Sergey Melnik, Jean-Paul Munier, and Deborah Chin. Ms. Chin is my last card.
Hello, my name is Sergey Melnik. So, many questions were already, or many concerns were already addressed today here. Probably I want to highlight some points that other people were mentioning. For instance, the study that was made, first, it was done a few years back, so we didn't have the new restaurant and the medical facility, so those added the traffic numbers. Second, having, even considering that the load is not significantly higher, I mean, it is already higher, but even, there were some points that we already have the lot with many cars in there, but those that will be now, they will be most likely living and, I mean, coming here and out in the short period of time versus where now it's more or less distributed over time. So, the traffic will be heavy anyways. The other thing is, just to keep in mind as well, that people who will be working in those buildings, then they probably will come from, I mean, some chances that they will come from other cities as well. And they can send their kids to our schools, so that will increase the, because you can apply based on where you work. So, that will increase the load on our schools. So, my kids go to one meter, so, which is already at high capacity, so that will increase it even more. The other thing is that safety is still a concern for me, so especially the construction, at the construction time. So, we had the construction going on there for a while with the restaurant and the facilities, and there were closures of the streets where we had to go to the, sorry, closures of the pedestrian area. So, we actually had to go on the streets with the kids, so like going to school, and that was not very fun. So, I don't want to repeat that again. And riding the bicycle, another thing was mentioned, that people will be actually using the town facilities and encourage the bike. That's not easy to bike to the center of the, to the downtown, because you need to cross four exits, I mean, it's two exits and two entrances to the 17. So, it's not that easy to bike. So, people won't be biking or even like walking because it's just not safe. So, they will be using cars even if they need to go to eat, to the downtown, they will be using cars. So, that will increase the traffic as well. So, and again, I, again, many people, many cars will be going in and out, and I like to bike there. So, again, even with those exits and entrance, we are still biking because there is a good hike there, which you can bike going to Los Gatos, and we like to do that, but it will be more complicated now. And getting kids to the activities exactly at the time after the school, especially at the evening time, it will be a problem because of the traffic. So, that's...
Thank you very much. Questions? Thank you, sir. Jean-Paul?
Yeah, my name is Jean-Paul Munier. A lot of remarks have been made already about the traffic problem that would be generated if this project is completed. I just wanted to add one small point, which is related to the map here. As you know, there's a traffic light here for people coming from either Highway 17 or downtown Los Gatos and want to turn left here on Alberta Way. There's a traffic light, so that people who want to turn left have the ability to do so, and the traffic coming down Highway 9 is stopped to allow them to turn left. The same problem would occur here with this building with 390 cars possibly trying to turn left here between 8:00 and 9:00 AM, or 8:00 and 10:00 AM, or whatever, and people trying to exit this in the morning trying to go to work or go to school. You're going to need a stop sign here to avoid collisions between people trying to exit here and people trying to turn left into this parking lot. So, you need a stop sign there, and as a result, whenever a flow of maybe 10 cars can take advantage of the green arrow and turn left here, they will quickly encounter a stoplight here and stack up on this stretch of Alberta Way, creating a gridlock. When this stretch is filled up, people, even though having a green light here, will have to wait until there is space available here, and these cars have been able to enter into the parking. So, basically, you have two stop signs in a row, a green arrow here and a stoplight here, which creates a gridlock here. I think it's a mathematical problem that you have to consider in this project.
Thank you. Questions for the Speaker? Sir, did you say stop sign or stoplight on Alberta Way?
I was, I think it's your choice. I think you can either put a traffic light here with a green light or a stop sign. This being a small street, it would probably be just a stop sign, but still, it's one car at a time. One car turns left, then one car can go. One car turns left, one car can go if it's a stop sign.
Thank you.
But that slows down the traffic.
Thank you very much. My last card is for Deborah Chin.
Hi, good evening. I live at 154 Maggie Court in the Bella Vista Townhomes. I didn't plan to speak tonight, but I feel compelled to express some concerns I have. I did attend the hearing, and I went with an open mind. There are, I ask also that you deny the application for several of reasons, which I will add my own personal perspective to. The first thing is obviously the mass and scale. It seems that there's a trend toward building toward the far, whether it be residential or commercial, and the far is something that is not guaranteed. It's a guideline, and we have to take into account the site and all the other considerations that go into determination of what is the appropriate size. The second thing is traffic and safety. I do bike. I started riding my bike downtown. It's terrifying to cross those exits into the downtown area. I live on Maggie Court, and a neighbor of ours bikes to Apple every day, and he got hit by a car, which, you know, obviously, he's a very experienced biker, and, you know, this is something that will only be exacerbated by the additional traffic. We talk about the traffic on the narrow street. Cars are parked on both sides of the street, and you literally have to dodge sometimes when you are trying to come down the street in either direction because of double-park sides and also the speed at which people are coming down that street. So, I do believe there is a significant safety issue, and on the weekends, the highway backs up on both sides because of the beach, and with this development, I believe we're also going to have the same effect during the weekdays. So, the quality of our life and also our ability to go about our daily activities is going to be severely impacted. The other thing I want to mention is parking. I think Commissioner Hudes mentioned there are parking spaces that will be removed from the street as a result, and all the parking is underground except for eight outdoor spaces. And one might intuit that that is, again, to maximize the building footprint. The last thing I want to talk to is character and collaboration with the community. I was in that room with the neighbor who referred to me, or referred to witnesses. Shane opened with a remark about how they don't make inflammatory remarks, and I sat there while there were similar comments being made, and I actually spoke to Mr. Lamb and advised him that making antagonistic remarks toward the community would not serve him. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the Speaker? Thank you very much. The applicant and the applicant's team are invited back to the podium for five minutes to provide any further comments.
I think I'll hold it this time. So, five minutes with the number of things that came up today isn't going to take, you know, that's going to cover maybe two or three things. How would you like us to do it? Would you like to ask us questions relative to what you heard? What's the best way to respond?
I'd pick your top items, see what you can do in five minutes, and then we may have some questions for you.
Okay, let's talk, since traffic was a big conversation, I think it's good to have the consultants address the fact that you're not going to have 390 people coming in in the AM peak and leaving in the PM peak. I think that was a big misconception that's actually pretty clear in the traffic studies. So, let's have them have that conversation, have the architect talk through the changes that were made to the building, and then I'll make a couple of closing comments. Is that all right? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Ad Van Den Haat. I'm a traffic and transportation engineer for Hexagon Transportation Consultants. And referring to the issue that's been brought up a lot tonight, just about the number of cars that would enter the facility, the new project, in the morning, based upon calculations that are based on actual traffic surveys that we are required to use to calculate how many cars actually will be generated by the site, there will be 139 additional vehicles in the morning coming into Alberta Way that will turn into Alberta Way and turn into the parking garage. So, 139 additional cars, that's about one every, what is it, 20, 25 seconds. The issue that was raised by some of the people about the queuing into the parking garage, and the fact that we don't see that a problem at all, that people won't be able to get in, is because there is a conflict, the left, the cars that need to turn left into the parking garage on Alberta Way need to give the right of way to the through traffic going towards Highway 9. There's only 50 cars at that location where the entrance of the parking garage is that would conflict with the left-turning vehicles that go into the parking garage. So, there's only one car every minute going towards Highway 9 on Alberta Way that, to which the left-turning vehicles need to yield to. So, in one minute, you can easily accommodate 12 cars into the parking garage. So, the fact that there would be any queuing or any spillback into, onto Alberta Way, onto Highway 9, that's not going to happen. So, I hope that clarifies.
I don't want to take up your time right now. I'll have questions for you later.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Dan Kirby with Architect, I'm the architect on the project. I just wanted to address the vice chair's earlier concern, right after the staff presentation about the design changes relative to the front of the building that faces Alberta Way in the corners. So, in response to staff comments and some of the concerns of the residents, we did redesign the corners of the building, the prominent corners that face Alberta Way, and what was done was the overall square footage of the project was reduced by over 1,000 square feet, and those front corners were reduced in height. And if you look at the perspective rendering that's on the front of the presentation package, you'll see that the Mansard roof of the corners was dropped in height, and the second floor plate was pulled back, and we created some balconies at those corners, and it's pretty evident in the perspective drawing. But I just wanted to provide that clarification, that that was in response to staff and the residents' concerns. We created a little bit more articulation of the roof heights and tried to pull the corners down, and also created some relief on the facade to reduce the overall bulk and mass of the buildings. So, okay? Questions or...? Thank you.
We'll do questions after your time.
Commissioners, I just wanted to address the bike issues that were brought up. I am an avid cyclist, been for 35 years. I have been to the site. Due to the complete street initiatives that you have here, we are voluntarily putting in a bike box. It's not a bike lane, just to clarify. That is to create visibility and safety for cyclists that want to go out of the site, or excuse me, out of Alberta Way and use the cycle routes.
Chair and members of the Commission, I just wanted to address a couple of the comments that suggested that impacts were not fully evaluated or that there were new impacts that hadn't been addressed. If you actually listen to the comments this evening, all of the comments are based on analysis contained in the very thorough EIR and analysis that the town staff and consultant conducted. Specifically, air quality impacts were evaluated, health and safety issues, emergency access issues, pedestrian, traffic, access, freeway impacts. All of those impacts were addressed. Impacts were identified, they were less than significant, and mitigated. There were no new significant impacts addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time's expired. Let's see if we have questions. Commissioner Hudes.
Yeah, thank you. I have many, many questions, and I would maybe organize them by addressing some of the traffic questions first, since that was the topic addressed here. And then I also have questions about the EIR, but let me just focus on some traffic questions.
Let's see how far we can get.
Okay. So, with regard to traffic, are there any ideas or solutions to encourage pedestrian and bicycle access to the downtown?
Other than...
See if we can do that from the podium.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The improvement plans that are part of the project is that the applicant is proposing to improve the pedestrian facility along the front edge on Alberta Way as well as on Highway 9. Now, there are sidewalks that is right adjacent to the roadway, and the applicant is proposing and is willing to fund moving the sidewalk away from the road and have a little buffer zone in between.
Are there any diagrams or drawings that address that that we can see?
There's got to be a better way. Do you have another one to the construction, with the improvement plans?
I would suggest it might do you some good to...
I agree.
...to explain what you've said.
Yeah, that's... I have a better graphic. We don't have this graphic. There you go. Well, I apologize for the...
Is that a drawing that we have already, or is that something new?
Yeah, it's just in the traffic report.
Could you give us the page number for that, please?
Commissioner Hudes, it's in the second packet of slides that was passed out at the beginning of the meeting, is what they're referring to here, correct?
Right.
There's also a picture of it in the justification letter that was made to Ms. Kinra Burke at the last page, too.
You have the same graphic. Great, thank you. So, as you can see, the red delineation you see here is basically the improved sidewalk, a sidewalk that is moved from the roadway. And there's now a buffer in between, between the roadway, it's about five, I think it's a five-foot buffer with plant, you know, with planting. And that's going along Alberta Way and then bends through, along Highway 9, where it's also pulled away from the road. Again, there's a buffer in between, so the pedestrian sidewalk is not immediately adjacent to the vehicles. There's a buffer of about five feet in between. And then there's an improved crossing at the ramp, the crosswalk is moved a little bit further downwards to give better visibility for the pedestrians. And then a similar concept is done along Highway 9 going towards downtown, where the sidewalk again is moved to the north and a buffer is created for the pedestrians to basically be further away from the vehicle traffic.
Does that replace existing sidewalk?
That's correct.
And so, basically, the sidewalk is being moved in and there's a buffer next to it?
That's correct.
And you referenced an improvement in the crosswalk to the entrance ramp. What specifically is that improvement?
That basically gives a better, a little bit better view of the pedestrians for, on come, for traffic that is using the ramp.
Is it being moved, or is it...
It's moved a little bit.
Being marked? What is, what is the difference?
It's, it's, it's just that it's a little bit further down, down, down the ramp.
Sir, it's their turn. Thank you.
So, what you've addressed so far addresses pedestrian. What about bicycle?
My understanding is that there is, the curb of the, the road will be a little bit widened on Highway 9 for future potential bike facility. I think that it's in the general plan that there might be a bicycle facility or bike, bike lane sometime in the future. But no actual improvements will be made by the applicant along, for bicycles along Highway 9 at this point.
Have there been any discussions with the bicycle and parking commissions?
I don't believe so. Not, not to my knowledge.
So, I'm still a bit lost about how bicycle access will, could be improved to downtown. Maybe you'd want to say one more thing about that?
Bicycle, that is not part of, there is no, there are no bicycle improvement proposed as part of the project.
Okay.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, I had a question as well. I started to go talk about this earlier, but we needed to hear what all the residents had to say. It seems to me, I used to chair the bicycle advisory committee here, and I was on the VTA BPAC for many years. It seems to me that you have this lead silver certification that you're seeking, and there's like all these great things on sites for bicyclists. But I'm not seeing the connectivity part of this coming to fruition. So, for example, someone lives currently in Mountain View and they commute to the site. How would they get to work on a bike safely? Because right now, unless something's changed, there's no access from Highway 9 directly into Los Godas Creek Trail without going around things. So, I'm just trying to see how it would be safe. And I don't know that there's any way that you can make crossing over those highway entrances and exits safe without putting someone at a bridge in. So, I was just wondering if any discussions had ever been made about that? Because, I mean, that is part of the whole picture.
Well, not part of the project, I don't think. Maybe the staff can answer that.
Lisa Peterson, Town Engineer. We have, as part of reviewing this project, we have a little bit of a different exhibit, but that's fine, we can use this one. So, what we have requested is the addition of the bike box at the end of Alberta Way. Also, we are requesting, because as I mentioned previously, in our future projects for traffic mitigation fees, one of the improvements that we are planning on doing is putting in complete streets between University and Los Godas Boulevard. So, one of the things that we have asked this project to do is to widen the roadway on the north side from Alberta Way going towards Highway 17, northbound, on ramps, in order to allow us to get a future bicycle lane in that area. It wouldn't actually be striped with this project, but we would end up having that area available to us on the street.
Well, I saw, I understand that, but how would that help crossing over the highway exit, entrance ramps?
Ultimately, as far as the project goes, I mean, there has to be a certain amount of nexus as well. Of course, we would like, you know, to ask the developer to provide us with a bicycle lane as far as we possibly could. But, but we ultimately end up looking at the area just around the project, because otherwise, there's no nexus there to ask them, for example, to give us a bicycle lane that's a mile down Highway 9.
So, you're basically saying that as much as you, you've asked for as much as you feel you could, and the bike boxes going to be, as long with the potential future bike lane area that isn't going to be actually implemented at this moment in time?
That's correct. And I actually did share this with the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission as well, and talked to them about these improvements. Thank you.
Question for staff. So that we all know, what is a bike box?
So, a bike box is an area that is put in at, as you can see where the location is, it's right at the very, right at the traffic signal, and it's a location that only a bicycle can go in. So, it allows a bicycle, a shielded area basically, to be in and without having to be next to cars. So, it's almost like their own private space in the road.
Do we have other bike boxes in town?
We don't, but there are some other cities that do. For example, Palo Alto and San Jose.
And when you say a space of their own, it's because the pavement is painted a color?
It's painted green, and the cars are not allowed to be in that area.
Thank you. Commissioner Burke.
I'm just going to do a quick follow-up, because you said that you took this information, and you did go talk to the Bike Coalition and everything. Could you please provide us, in your words, their feedback on this?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think in general, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission is excited about, you know, any type of improvements that occur in regard to, you know, bicycle or pedestrian improvements. So, having talked to them also about the separated sidewalks, I think, you know, that was, anytime those types of improvements are provided to the commission, of course, they're always in support of those types of improvements and looking to put in as much as we can, of course.
Commissioner Hootis.
I have other questions for the applicant that I'd like to...
Well, I have questions for staff, if I could stay with her.
Go ahead.
I don't want to use the Denzel Washington again, but talk to me like I'm a six-year-old. I don't see that 17 exchange as bicycle or pedestrian friendly. I've been doing that strip for 30-something years, and I know there's lots of bad behaviors there, lots of impatient people. Tell me, and I respect your expertise, how are, how are we going to do this? How are we going to tell people bicycles are cool, don't hit them? Please, I'm serious. It's a culture thing, and I don't have it. Is everybody else going to get it?
Well, and are you talking about in terms of...
Safety.
The bike box or what we can put in at this location? I guess I need some clarification.
The applicant is talking about pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly, and once you, and my cynical view, which can be amended, is once I get off that property, there's nothing friendly. Those are mean streets, as Perry Thomas once said. That is a 17 interchange. Everybody wants to get on it. Go, go, I've seen, you've seen it. It's even accelerated by the downhill where you can really pick up some speed. Outside of the very lovely, well-intended project, I don't see evidence of a culture inclined to become a bicycle or pedestrian-friendly atmosphere. I mean, when we talk about giving discounts to transit, the two bus stops are a mile, one's a half a mile, the other's three-quarters a mile away. And I'm just dying to get to work, and I'm going to walk that last half-mile and get my hair messed and bugs in my teeth. Tell me what I'm missing about this culture once I get off the property.
Well, I think that one of the things that it's important to acknowledge is that the town is trying to move towards a more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly town. And one of the things that we are moving forward with, and that the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission has been very heavily involved with, is this Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. So, ultimately, we have a consultant on board that's, that's putting this together. It's something what they're going to do is look at these areas that are very challenging, such as the area right here at Alberto and Highway 9, and Highway 9 in general, you know, from Santa Cruz to Los Godas Boulevard, these are very challenging areas. And that's one of the reasons that we are getting this Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan and putting it together, and hopefully going to be able to have, you know, good information come out of that that can also ultimately give us the capital projects we need to make the town more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly.
And through the vice chair, I would just offer that you're talking about an existing condition with bike and ped, that this application does not have a nexus to solve. And so, I think it's important to make sure that there's no doubt that it's not a safe bike and ped environment across 17 on Highway 9. But they're also, and the town attorney may have some additional comments, and Ms. Peterson spoke to it before. Because there's an existing condition, the project has not created that position, and the project is not obligated to solve that condition. And so, if the town attorney has any additional information.
No, we've talked, we've talked about this issue on a few different projects. It seems lately that you're, you, we all know there's, there's traffic problems, there's ways problems, there's cut-through traffic problems. And a project has to mitigate the, the environmental impacts that it creates. It isn't required to solve the town's problems. So, because this is a very challenging intersection, it isn't required to solve problems because it hasn't created those problems. It only has to mitigate what it is creating, and so that's where the nexus has to be drawn. So, if you're looking for a, a bridge, for this, this project to build a bridge over, a separate bridge over the 17, it's just, there's no nexus between this project and that, and that requirement. So, there might be other things that you can do to try to make this a more safer intersection. But I think what you're trying to get at is a completely different project that the town has to, has to tackle as a capital improvement project. And there might be a percentage that this project would have to chip in for, that's through the traffic mitigation funds. But to try to create, to solve problems is what it seems like we've been doing a lot in the last few projects have come forward, and I've tried to steer you away from that unless you can find a nexus.
All right. Other questions? Commissioner Hootis.
I wanted to move back to the applicant, please, on the traffic. And the questions I have come back to some things that were said. First is the concern about the left turn from Alberto to, left turn from Alberto to the parking lot and the stacking that could occur back onto Highway 9 if, in fact, Alberto is backed up. Could you, could you tell me again why that will not happen, in your opinion, and whether there is a requirement for a stop sign near the parking lot entrance?
Maybe I can respond to the second question first. In order to justify a stop sign, that had, that had, there has to be some amount of traffic volume in order, at that particular conflict point, that needs to be higher than a certain threshold to be, for a stop sign to be in place. I didn't do the calculations, but I can guarantee you that that threshold will not be met for a stop sign at that location. Secondly, the fact that we don't believe that there will be any queuing issues, and maybe I can use this graphic to explain this better. Traffic is turning left on this left turn lane into Alberta Way and then turns left into the driveway. The project is not, it's not shown here, but that's basically the movement I have to make. The only traffic that this left-turning vehicle needs to yield to, to get into the parking garage, is from traffic that's coming southbound on Alberta Way, correct? So, right now, based on our traffic counts, there is, there are approximately 50 vehicles every hour coming down the road here towards Highway 9, 5:00. That is about one vehicle for every minute, a little less, actually. It's one vehicle every minute. For a, a vehicle to turn left into the parking garage, it's less than five seconds. But let's just use, it takes them five seconds to make that left turn. So, there's, there are gaps of approximately one minute between each vehicle, on average, sometimes it's longer, sometimes it's shorter. So, for, for traffic to turn left, you could, you could have 12 cars turning left before the next vehicle comes, because you have a minute to do that, because there's, there are gaps of a minute long, sometimes a minute and a half, sometimes 30 seconds. So, you can, you can move 12 vehicles turning into the site every minute. And there's only 139 coming down, 140, something like that. So, there shouldn't be any issue with queuing backup towards Highway 9.
Can I ask a question related to, you mentioned the 139 number. I'm looking at your traffic study graphic four. And so, I get how you came up with the 139, but what I, what I wasn't understanding is, in the AM peak hour, you said the total trips from the proposed project would be 181. When there's 390 spots in the garage, why would it only be 181?
Okay, because not all employees come in, well, first of all, not all 390 will be there on a daily basis, because people, people come or people go. But based on empirical data, not everybody comes in to that one hour, because what we're talking about here is the 139 or 189 you're talking about. It's, it's the number of vehicles that will get to the site in the busiest hour of the morning. So, let's say between quarter 8 and quarter 9, or 7:30 and 8:30. It's an hourly volume. Not all the workers come into the site in that one hour. There's people who come at 9:00, there's people who have meetings, people who work, you start early, come in at 6:00. I mean, it varies. So, on, on, on average, and that's all based on actual data that we, that has been collected over time, at many, many different office buildings, there's only, there's 130, 189, I think it's 189.
Yeah, you said, I'm just reading, I'm reading your chart, it says 181 total trips, and then you backed out 42 trips for the peak for the existing facilities, and that was a net of 139.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And so, what you're saying is that this is the absolute max hour, it's a one-single-hour thing, because you did have day, total daily trips of 1,031...
That's daily.
In and out of the, over the course of...
Right.
And that's between, like, 7:00 and 6:00.
24 hours, 24, I mean, there might be somebody at 11:00 o'clock.
Okay, fine. But, but, so, out of the net of what you're saying is 700, the peak would be 139 in one single hour in the morning?
That's correct.
And then 102 in the, in the PM?
In that, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Hootis.
Following up to a question, an issue that was, that was brought to us in testimony, daily trips proposed and existing, are these, what do, what do these numbers mean on this study graphic four?
Yeah, it's a good question. It's actually, it's only for informational purposes. We, the traffic analysis does not do any analysis, actual traffic analysis, of the daily traffic. It's for informational purpose only. Because the traffic analysis is concentrated on peak hour traffic per SEQA guidelines and per the town's guidelines to do traffic studies, you have to look at AM and PM peak hour trips.
So, do you have any information on actual... So do you have any information on actual traffic from the existing, the existing use compared to the proposed use?
Only for the peak hour, not on a daily level.
I wanted to get a broader opinion about the safety issue. And as an engineer, and I believe, you know, we are in an area of nexus because there will be an increase in traffic into this proposed facility. What, what ideas are there to improve the traffic safety situation with regard to access of emergency vehicles, you know, given the residents that exist there already and the additional traffic proposed?
Additional safe, yeah, you wanna answer? Yeah, so, so there's two, two parts of this discussion. First is construction. The second is after construction's completed. So during the 14 months of construction from demolition to completion, we will have an agreement with the town on a construction management plan. And each day, we will actually have flagmen at the site for a couple of reasons. One, to coordinate the, our own construction traffic, but then, two, to also coordinate emergency vehicles where our construction traffic will be shut down in the event of an emergency. So that's, and we assured everyone that came to the open houses, that especially from Los Gatos Commons, that we would handle onsite construction that way, and we've assured the town the same.
So you're proposing a flag solution during construction?
That's right.
What about ongoing with the additional traffic?
For ongoing purposes and for, mainly for pedestrian safety, Public Works has asked us to do a number of improvements. We are providing the signal interconnect conduit from Los Gatos Boulevard down to Alberto Way. We're putting the cable in for the signalization of those lights. We are upgrading the signalized intersection and the light systems. We're putting LED signalized indicators in. We're putting the ADA compliant pedestrian in. And we're also putting in the new signalized overheads and video detection system in, too. And we're repainting the pedestrian crosswalks to, to increase pedestrian safety.
So as a result of neighborhood feedback about this emergency access situation, was there ever consideration of widening Alberta Way, particularly from the curve that appears to occur right around the property line to Highway Nine? Was there ever discussion about that as a possible solution?
Yeah, I think Public Works can address that.
Ultimately, as far as widening, you know, I guess my question would, would be, you know, would still, it would, are you talking about trying to get an extra lane in there or just extra space for an emergency vehicle? Currently, the, the road width is 36-foot wide, which is appropriate for two lanes of traffic, one each direction plus parking. And it is, of course, wide enough to get emergency vehicles down. So the widening component for emergency vehicles wouldn't necessarily make any difference. I guess I'm not completely understanding.
Well, again, my question really was for the applicant. In responding to public concern and input about access for emergency vehicles, was there ever a consideration of widening that, that road? Perhaps, you know, giving up some of the, some of the setback or some of the building size in order to widen that? Was that ever a topic that was raised?
It was raised. And then, let me, let's talk a little bit about what's here. So the reason that there are three lanes now, or what we've proposed as the applicant is three lanes, is from feedback we got from the neighborhood in terms of people, how they got into the site in the evening and how they get out in the morning. That actually came from us to the town, saying, this is the type of feedback we're getting. Could this be an option? Do we need to widen the road? Do we not need to widen the road? What you have to remember here is, is the way this subdivision, and everyone living here is part of a original subdivision of this area, whether it was for residential or, at the end, it was office. Whoever subdivided that area chose to have it more bucolic than to have a straight line going down the middle. Maybe it was because that's what the farms or whatever were as land uses there before. In our particular case, we have a couple of areas, and the community or that neighborhood isn't actually on the same page, ironically. This particular area, we've actually offered that if it would help to straighten this out without it creating a quote "speed zone," we'd be open to having that discussion. We actually talked also, and a number of people that are here from Los Gatos Commons asked, why couldn't we just have red zones throughout the entire area? That isn't actually shared by a number of the other homeowner associations who felt that they actually have excess parking, that they want to be able to have access to out on the street. So there isn't common agreement between this, the various groups that are represented here in those four homeowner associations, of what we can control in terms of our frontage. We actually had considered taking this and straightening it out and potentially making this wider. We actually did ask Public Works about widening this, and if that was needed, and the answer we got was no. But in terms of public feedback, that's the, that was our reaction to that feedback.
And is, is that still something that is on the table as far as you're concerned? I will have questions for Public Works later.
Well, I think it's, it becomes relative. Does that mean it's, we're widening it by a foot or by a mile, right? So, I mean, that's the part that's difficult to, to determine.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Birch.
Since we are talking a bit about the traffic in that area, I want to bring up a couple of things, see if you can answer for me. If you look on sheet C 2.0, that's your drainage and utility plan. When you take a look at that, you're going to be tying to the existing storm sewer across the street. And obviously, there's other street renovations. And I know you don't have a traffic plan in place right now, so I'm somewhat bringing this up for a future point, that this is the exact type of construction I think the residents specifically are asking about, because that does involve opening a trench, putting plates back on it, but it has to be open to get inspected. So in the past, on your other projects, how have you dealt with that specifically, ensuring that there's still access for the residents and emergency vehicles?
Well, in this particular case, and I think someone here who saw one of our projects lives in, or works in Los Altos, we actually had trenching in that project, which we completed in May of 2015. We actually have several areas where we actually had different trenching, whether it was for electrical or for sewer or for, actually for our water supply, because we had to do a number of things. So in that particular case, one side of the road is always open, always. So you're only doing one-half at a time technically, in terms of what's there. And then you're plating it, you know, depending on what's there, you're doing the other side. That other side that's been plated is open, and so you always have that. And in the, in this particular case, where we would have flagmen there, that would absolutely be covered in terms of what their purview would be.
Yes.
So I would assume, should the project move forward at some point, that you would be sharing your traffic plan with the residents? So that they can understand the scheduling of when that might be closed down? So if they have appointments or things they're trying to schedule, they can work around that?
We actually got a number of people that gave us feedback that they'd like to have weekly meetings. And we've agreed to it. We've offered it. In fact, in the last series of, of open houses, we actually openly said, we'll set a time each week, and anyone that wants to know information about any part of the project, if anyone's having problems with desk control, if they're having problems with, with noise or anything else, we're happy to address it then. They'll have our, our business cards, it'll have our cell numbers on them, they'll have everything.
Chair, may I ask one more follow-up question in relation? So just staying on the same vein, it's a pretty large site. So I would assume that through phasing, we could have a construction lay-down area, there's places for parking for your onsite crews, trucks that are bringing things will actually come onto the site and will not be doing deliveries in the street? Is that your plan? I don't see a phasing plan or anything in here. I assume you haven't gotten to that stage yet?
No.
But I'm sure you've thought it through.
I think the town, so, so as you know, we have 390 parking spaces. The, the first three months of construction will all be excavation.
Right.
And demolition, excavation, and shoring.
Which is a lot of trucks. I mean, we've all seen it. How are you gonna do that? That's, you're hitting exactly what I was, yeah. How on the site are you gonna have the flow so those trucks aren't idling in the street?
Yeah, there's, there is a, I don't know that I have it here, but there is an actual ingress and egress plan that shows, can I show you?
Yeah.
I'll show you on here. It's not necessarily exact, but what it actually shows is, is most of the trucks will either be coming northbound or southbound on Seventeen to get to the site. They'll come in, in, through this particular left-turn lane off Los Gatos Saratoga, onto Alberto Way. And then the actual routing comes back towards the end and then works its way through the site, and then back out again, and then directly back out to Seventeen. So there actually is a, an ingress/egress plan for excavation exclusively that's in one of the packets that's here.
So I'm gonna look at staff and say we can make that a part of conditions of approval? That those trucks will not be idling on the street, that they will follow a traffic plan on the site?
Parks and Public Works always, and so I'll speak for them, and they can jump up and down in the air if I, I speak the wrong terms here. But a truck route plan is always something that is going to be necessary and required and reviewed by Parks and Public Works for any operation that requires this amount of excavation and off-haul.
Thank you. I have more, but I know there's so many of us here, so.
Commissioner.
Just thinking about the questions that Commissioner Birch is asking, you clearly explained in your first presentation, all the experience that you have making these kinds of developments, and they all look great and all that. But, but it did dawn on me, have you done a project like this in a, basically a residential neighborhood? Because there are 400 residents on, or something like that, on Alberto Way. Have you done a project like this? And then how have you addressed their, you know, because I'm sure other neighborhoods would have similar types of concerns with?
Absolutely. So we've had probably four projects that have been on residential streets. We had a large one that, anyone knows, Redwood City's on Woodside Road. Woodside Road's a very busy highway, basically, same as, as Los Gatos Saratoga Road. And it was a five-story residential condo project. And it immediately backed up to probably something in the range of 600 residential units, plus a horseshoe area where people were that was probably another 300 units. And so we had, we had almost an identical staging plan there, and it was, it was, the site itself was about an acre. So we didn't even have as much room to, to stage the project on this one. We actually have two acres. And we have a very tight management process in terms of how we manage it, not only our onsite but with the town. But we also had almost, I want to say, under a handful of complaints as it came to, to demolition, excavation, and shoring. In fact, we even had neighbors that came and asked us when we were gonna finish up excavation and shoring after they were completely done. So, and they had been done for about three weeks. So we're really careful about that phase, because frankly, that's probably the most impacted timeframe during a construction project.
So I understand about the construction. I guess then there's also kind of the land use. And so you're describing a situation where you're putting more high-density residential in a residential neighborhood versus, this is clearly like a mixed-use type environment.
Yeah, but that, that particular project alone was very high-density on, on an acre site. So I mean, whether it was residential or not, it, I think what you're asking me is, had we managed a project before that actually where we built it to the comfort of the neighbors?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
And you did?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Birch.
Unless my other fellow commissioners have other questions along those lines, I was gonna move to some of the architectural. Go right ahead.
Just a couple of small traffic ones or parking. The spaces that are being eliminated on the street, I believe there are, I couldn't, I couldn't tell, in one part it said, I think, four plus one plus one, and another place it said eight. How many are being eliminated on the street?
There's a total of eight.
And was there any discussion with the residents about being able to park in the parking lot with that elimination?
Thank you for asking the question. We didn't cover it earlier. So the way this, this, we didn't get, there were a number of comments about parking, and we didn't get to cover those. There's seven parking stalls that are visitor's stalls above grade, or I should say at grade. And the remainder of the parking stalls, 383 are below grade. That particular parking will be for our tenants, the underground areas, the two stories of underground parking, will be for our tenants only. And it'll be daytime, I'm sure there'll be a set hour, seven to six, let's say, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. That parking structure will be closed at night from 6:00 PM at night until 7:00 AM the next morning, and on a Friday night, from 7:00 PM till 6:00 AM on a, on that Monday. It's a safety issue, not only for our tenants, but I, and I've said this in all of the community meetings, I think it's a safety issue for residents who might get used to parking down there, and we have no ability in off-hours to secure that for their safety.
Question, Commissioner Hudes. We've had discussions in the past where work hours are regulated, and I've always had difficulty understanding. Are you saying the parking lot is gonna be locked up and closed at six or seven or whenever?
At night.
What if I stay over?
At night?
Yes.
There, when, when I say that, it means there's no access in unless you have a card, right? And we have enough area there to be able to, 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 anyone know how?
I think I got it. There'll be no security personnel, but there'll be cards to allow me to get out and perhaps even in if I have to.
Cards for you to get out, you don't need a card to, I mean, cards for you to get in, you don't need a card to get out, you just have to drive up to the, to the activator.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
If I could stay in the garage for a second. I've tried to understand the plans. There's a ramp that is both in and out, from the ground level to the first?
Let's go back to landscape, it's easier to see. Okay, so landscape plan. So just to route you here, it's Los Gatos Saratoga, Alberto Way. And Public Works should probably weigh in on this as well. One of the discussion always in these is when you're having an ingress/egress or an inbound/outbound on a parking, you know, garage, what's the safest place to put it? I know there were a number of comments that came tonight. The safest place to put it is the furthest place you can on a site away from a major intersection. That's absolutely the top priority. I know, I know that wasn't completely the answer to your question.
It wasn't even my question.
I know. But I, somebody answered, asked it earlier, so I just wanted to answer. So there's only one way into this project, which is at the very end here, up against the common fence with Los Casitas. You come in at this grade level, and then you go down into the garage. What you're seeing here is the shading areas that show you that elevation. So, and then this actually serves not only as inbound but outbound, but for anyone that's in this visitor parking area, they'll come in this way and then out and right, back out to, to Los Gatos Saratoga.
Thank you. Now, my question was, that ramp that gets you down and up, if I'm going down, I guess it becomes visually obvious that there's no place to park. According to the, to the designs I looked at, I have to make a sharp left turn and then a sharp right turn to go down to the next level.
Do we have the garage plan? I haven't, I haven't looked at this in a while.
The up-down's in the middle, that's why I have to make all those turns.
Yeah. It goes straight down and then left. Okay, so, so the way this goes is it goes all the way down to the end and then left. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, but how do I get to this bottom floor? It's in the middle.
Uh, how do you, well, you're gonna come, you're either gonna come around, all the way around and down, or you're gonna come back through here and, and down through the middle? Yeah, or you can make an immediate left if you want to.
So you, that's what I meant.
Yeah, so there's three different ways to get there. Immediate left, straight down, back through here, and around through here.
Now, you know this better than I do. In case of an emergency, and let's say- In case of an emergency, and let's say the parking lot was three-quarters full, is that SOP for design on garages? That I'm in, that I'm on the bottom floor and I've gotta get up that one lane, make those curves and get up another one lane and try to get out on Alberta?
So typically, whenever we do a multi-level parking garage, we wanna make sure that the main ramp to get down to the next level is somewhat remote from the entrance to the garage. You don't wanna put those two things right together, 'cause then you got cars coming up and down and they're conflicting with each other. You wanna get people into the garage, have them move through here to slow speed, look for a space. If they don't find a space, they work their way down to the, the next level somewhat remote from the ramp that's coming right into the garage. That's the safest way to, to handle it. And we, when we talk about emergencies, if there's an emergency like a fire or an earthquake, people are not gonna be jumping in their cars and trying to race their cars out of the garage. They're gonna be going on foot out of the building to an evacuation area out in the front of the building.
Let's just say the school bell rang at 5:00.
I'm sorry?
We're all going home.
Okay.
And we've all gotta get up that one ramp to get out on Alberta.
Right.
Tell me that that's okay.
It, it is okay because what's, you want, you want the people coming up from the, from the lower level of the garage to not be conflicting with the people that are coming up this ramp. You want to be queuing and coming up separately from that location. That's why you separate them. If they're right together, then every, everybody's moving at the same time up the same ramp.
But there's one ramp to get from the second to the first floor.
Correct.
One ramp to get from the first floor, floor to Alberta. And in your experience, for people, how many did we say, 300? Trying to go home at 5:00, that works?
Well, they don't all go at the same time, but, but hang on, I can answer the question.
I wrote that note, do we have any ability to request the residents to stagger?
The, the reason we separate them is 'cause these people on this first level below grade are gonna go up this ramp while these people are still coming up from the, from the bottom level. Does that make sense? You don't wanna have them all kinda go out at the same time. That's part of the reason why you separate the two, the ramps to the two levels.
What control do we have over that? That's what I'm looking for. I don't see everybody able to leave from, from the bottom basement, going up one ramp, one ramp, and then out on Alberta, unless there was a, you talked earlier about, um, having contracts with, with the incoming residents on various aspects of, of their business, like number of employees and that kinda thing. And I was wondering if you could, or have in the past, dealt with multiple employers to, um, encourage staggered work times. They can't all leave at 5:00.
Maybe I can answer that. Um, there are hundreds of those examples with office buildings where this occurs, with parking garages next to the office buildings. It's the same concept that, that happens in the, in the afternoon, that not all 390 are going home at the same time. They don't leave all at, at 5:00. Typically what happens if around 5:00, 5:05, 5:10, a, there, there are more people leaving the site than at quarter six maybe. But, so there might be a little bit of traffic in the garage to get out, which is very typical. It's just like a, a typical road. The, the, the good thing about this design is, and the, the way they have to access is they, there's very little conflicts of, for that traffic to get out of the parking garage, because once they get to the exit of the parking garage, they turn right onto Alberta Way. There's very little conflict for those, for those cars to turn, because there's hardly any traffic on Alberta Way. So they turn right and then go straight to Highway 9. So this is almost a continuous flow of traffic. So the fact that, uh, there might be some queuing occurring in the garage to get out, it, it, it happens everywhere. It happens at every garage, but it, it, there is no, there's no traffic.
As they come up from the, um, level below the street and they're coming up toward Alberta, is there a stop sign there?
There, I, I haven't seen it.
So the cars in Alberta, the cars in Alberta would have the right of way?
So you're talking about, you're talking about right, right here where they're taking the right?
Yeah.
Absolutely. There'd be, there'd be a stop sign. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Which, which gives the Alberta traffic the right of way.
Of course.
Unless they wanna be courteous. All right. I, I'm just not familiar with that design and in, you know, the, the commercial design guidelines talk about a number of things that, that are far more reduced than what we have before us. So I need to adjust to that, maybe, because I don't know, but if we have a similar complex, um, in town.
We have one with three levels of underground parking. Where is the original, the original Netflix buildings have three levels of underground parking under those buildings.
Okay. And that's on, that's on a major Winchester street?
That is on Winchester, but it has other conflict points and a stoplight.
And it's a huge property and it's not surrounded by residential, not on that side of the street?
There's 291 residential units right behind it.
Over, over on the other side.
Access to the same, same alley. One, one thing I just wanted to add that I think our traffic engineer was alluding to is if the freeway was in this direction and you had to come here and, and make a left, now you're crossing two lanes of traffic. That would be a much more difficult situation than making a right and a right. This is gonna flow pretty smoothly at the end of the day, people heading to the freeway. They're not gonna be stacked up waiting to try to make a more difficult left turn. That's.
Chairman Kane, just one other thing too that may help you. Uh, typically when you, when we build underground parking structures, we, we do create them with site circulation patterns and stop signs and the like, that, that's just inherent and natural in that. So if you're not used to that, we'd be happy to show you garages where that has been implemented at our Los Altos or other projects, where you can see that it is, it's there to protect the safety of the vehicles and the people.
My concern on, on the traffic, um, is, we're talking about important elements of the project and I feel like I wish I knew a good way to get to the macro elements, which is, which is, um, the intensity and the scale of the project. What the town consulting architect said in his first letter, which I'm thinking wasn't, wasn't really addressed in the second letter. It was, it was mitigated to some extent. But the commercial design guidelines have words in it that try to get to the emotion of the town, the feel of the town. "The community's built environment is characterized by relatively small-scale buildings, a quiet architectural demeanor, respect for neighboring properties, and the attention to architectural detail in landscaping." And I'm thinking I can get two out of four for you, but I, I don't know where to go with the rest of it, especially on that one corner that I'd mentioned earlier. It could, there's other sections of the, of the commercial design guidelines. Review the common design guidelines in the introduction. This is advice to us when we're trying to implement a project. "Of special importance are the guidelines which stress design that maintains and reinforces the unique scale and character of Los Gatos." So I'm defining, at least presently, the unique, the unique scale as being what's there. And I'm faced with something, you know, maybe over three times the size of that. So I don't know that I'm, vis-à-vis that, that triple, I'm able to maintain the scale. I'm looking to my commissioners for, when we deal with Larry Cannon's first letter, how do I mitigate, how do I ameliorate what, what doesn't seem to have been achieved? Sir?
So my sense of where we are with the meeting, we're at the moment where we're asking questions of the applicants and I'm mindful of the fact that it's seven minutes after 11:00 and we would adjourn at 11:30. And I think it would be helpful to all parties to focus on the moment of the meeting that we're at. They were not in the deliberations, we're in the moment of the meeting when we're questioning the applicants.
I was gonna state the same thing. We're still in the question period. If there's more, no more questions for the applicant, then we can finish up with them.
I guess my questions go to the ineffective rhetorical of, explain to me how, how this is applicable and consistent with the project. And I, I don't know how to do that once they leave. But I will, I will defer it, it's getting late. Commissioner Hudes.
Um, as I, I mentioned earlier, I do have many more questions of the applicant, some relating to the EIR. Um, I don't know that we really have the time to start going through that yet. Um, but I did have one more question about the traffic and the flow, if I may proceed with that.
Yeah, given the hour, yes, you may. And, and given the hour, and, and Commissioner Erickson is right, it's getting late. I think we're going to, um, if we can, if we can, it's okay too. But if we can complete our questions of the applicant, I can close that portion of the hearing tonight. Or we can leave it open and reconvene on a date certain, finish questioning the applicant, and then decide what the commission wants to do. Commissioner Erickson, is that along the lines of what you were saying?
I guess if we could, I'd be, I've asked all the questions I need to ask of the applicant. Um, and I don't know, I can't speak for the rest of the commissioners other than Commissioner Hudes, but it would be, seemed like to me it would be useful if we could get through that, including through the environmental impact report questions that at least Commissioner Hudes has. I'd be quite happy if we weren't staying until 12:30 or 1 o'clock or something to stay a little bit beyond 11:30, if it were a reasonable period of be, time beyond 11:30 so we could get through that portion, the portion of the questions. But I don't wanna presume that for the rest of the commission.
My goal is subject to what the commission wants to do, is to try to get through that portion of questioning and then look at another time. Commissioner Hudes.
I mean, I for one have been presented with some new information tonight that was not in documents. Um, and I would prefer to actually absorb some of the information that's been presented and continue with questions, um, to the applicant. My, my opinion.
Commissioner Birch.
Um, speaking for myself, I do not wanna be here really late tonight. Um, and we've barely talked traffic, we haven't even talked architecture yet. So I, I, I think for those of us that still wanna talk, we have way more than what we're gonna be able to close out tonight. So, um, I do know Commissioner Hudes has been raising his hand for a while though, so I don't wanna take up your question time.
Well, I just, I just had one about traffic and I may proceed, I may finish on that subject, for myself at least. And that is, um, about, we had some public testimony about, um, underground parking and multiple entrances to mul, uh, underground parking of, uh, of, uh, the scale of what's been proposed here. And, um, public testimony about having two separate entrances, separated entrances to underground parking. We also had a suggestion to, uh, wrap incoming traffic through the 17-on-ramp to the rear of the building and circulation of traffic into the underground parking, not in and out through the same driveway, but through potentially another one. Is that, um, is that something that you looked at and analyzed? And what was the result of, um, looking at more than one entry and exit to, uh, underground parking of this scale?
Yeah, I can't, uh, talk to whether, one, trying to negotiate an access point with Caltrans would, this project would be 30 years from now and we'd probably all be gone. I mean, it's literally, the idea of, of, of accessing a, a, a private site on a Caltrans on-ramp is probably a one in a million shot, 10 million, one in 10 million shot. So that, the likelihood of that happening isn't, isn't there. Um, in terms of having one access point to the project, which we actually do here, whether you go down into the garage or whether you come around, um, that frankly was feedback that we were able to get from Public Works uh, in terms of where the ideal spot was to have that so that it simplified the actual access to the project uh, without being a conflict to the corner of Los Gatos Saratoga Road and Alberta Way.
Did you consider another access at the other end of the property? Um, or any other solutions?
Well, we, we actually considered a number of, of solutions. This is where we really have to rely on Public Works though, to give us direction on where the safest point and where they will endorse it. This is all, just like we would with planning or anything else, a huge amount of input, whether it's the traffic or access or plan or whatever, this was all direction we needed to take when we submitted, uh, our preliminary plans. That's where we were able to say, this can be done, that can be done, what would you like us to do?
I just wanted to emphasize your earlier point that, um, whenever we do projects like this, the, the main concern is to make sure the access point is as far away from the, the controlled intersection as possible. If you were to put a driveway down at this end, you're gonna create all kinds of conflicts with this controlled intersection. So that's kinda rule number one. And the other point I wanted to make was that, I know this garage seems very large to people in the room, but we've built garages significantly larger than this that have one, uh, access point for in and out. This is actually quite a bit of queuing. It may not look like it on the site plan, but I can assure you based on our experience, um, that there's, there's gonna be plenty of queuing room along this in and out, both of the cars coming in going for a garage of this size.
Thank you.
If I can ask one thing, add one thing to that, we're ambivalent as to where it is. So if that was your question, did we direct, did we direct it? Uh, if it were here and this was the safest place to get people in and out and Public Works was great with it, we're fine with it. We, it's not a design issue for us as to where it is on the street. We just want it to be safe. Yeah.
Thank you. I, I may have questions for staff when we close the public hearing on that topic. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? You had a series.
Well, I, I mean, yeah, I do, but I just, again, it's 11:15, so do we wanna dive into that or? I, I'm gonna look to my fellow commissioners. What do you guys wanna do? Okay.
Commissioner Hanson, what?
I think there's still a lot of questions to be asked. I think we, we should continue.
Commissioner Erickson? Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah.
Then I'm not gonna close the.
No, you are. The, the hearing would be closed to the public. The only thing that you're continuing is questions of the applicant.
Which is exactly what I meant. So I think we'll continue this.
They'll just, I'm, I'm sorry, just to clarify. It, no, when the, then when the hearing is continued, the public is invited to that, but there will be no more public comment taken at the continued hearing. That part of it has been closed. You can still submit written comments at any time to the planning commission, but there'll be no more public comment. When we, when we reconvene, it'll be picked back up with questions of the applicant.
We haven't gotten to the draft EIR, we haven't gotten to the final EIR. Um, we haven't gotten to Plan B, which is my favorite part of the draft EIR. Um, and I, I think we'll need some time to digest what we've learned tonight and maybe some time for you to digest what, what you heard from the community and what you've heard from us. So what I'd like to do, um, is pick a, pick a date?
Well, there's some gentlemen blocking some key dates on my calendars over there. So, um, obviously the next hearing that we have is August 24th. Following that, there's September 14th or September 28th. Um, so.
Our next hearing's the 24th. What, I'd like to do it as soon as possible. What's the agenda look like for the 24th?
Um, the agenda is, has I believe three items on it approximately, and so we should be able to accommodate it.
Well, let's do this one.
Depending on the outcome and public testimony received.
Let's do this one first?
The, the continued hearings always go first.
Good, all right.
And so Mr., Commissioner Erickson looks like he has a.
Commissioner Erickson.
Uh, question for the staff first, is, do you know if this room is available on the 17th?
I unfortunately do not know that. Sorry.
My, my concern about, about continuing to the 24th, and I have great respect for Mr. Paulson's, um, abilities, so wouldn't wanna argue with him too much, but there's three items on the agenda and if I understood my fellow commissioners, we, the, not all of us have asked all the questions about the application, have asked no questions about the environmental impact report yet. So my guess is it could easily fill up a robust amount of time on an evening. So my question is, would we be better served and would we be respectful of the applicant to attempt to continue it on the 17th?
Well, again, I, I do not know whether or not the, um, chambers are available that evening. We would have to do that. Ultimately, the planning commission is free to make a motion and continue it to a date. Should that date be unavailable, then we would continue it to a, another date, um, and then move forward from there. Um, understand, the, there's, I believe, again, three items on the hearing on the 24th and, um, sometimes, as is tonight, we had two items and here we are at 11:30, still having conversations. So that's always a possibility, but I would leave it up to the commission. Um, obviously, the 17th would have to work for the town attorney. I'm not sure available on the 17th.
Do we know when Commissioner O'Donnell comes back too? Okay. It's, I mean.
Um, it, we, you would have a quorum, but I, I will not be here on the 17th. I'm on vacation next week, so.
Okay, well, let's use the 24th. Make a motion. Okay, well, let's use the 24th, make a motion.
Let's see if we can put this to a motion, I would move that we continue the hearing to Wednesday, August 24th, and that this be the first item on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Discussion, call the question, all those in favor, aye, unanimous. We'll reconvene and we'll begin, we'll continue with questions of the applicant on the 24th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're not done yet. We're not done yet.
Not quite, not quite, we have to build a project. The P E. No, but Mary wanted to close out the hearing. Director's report, Commissioner Sanders.
All right, I am back, and I have a question for staff. The, the meeting has not been adjourned, so if you all could be quiet while we continue with the hearing. Thank you. Question for staff, with an earlier motion that was made for item number two. There's a conflict in the architecture and site application that I just need clarification on, because we made a motion to approve architecture and site application S-16-003, however, when I read the agenda, it reads that the application was S-16-001. So can you clarify that we made the correct motion for the correct application?
Well, I think ultimately that would be a clerical error, so that's not an issue, the hearing was clearly on 477 Rate Street, the application number.
We'll confirm, we'll confirm that it's the correct one and make certain that the motion reflects that.
In the minutes, correct.
Okay, thank you, just a little record-keeping issue here. All right, so, we will move to other business, and I am looking to Mr. Paulson for a report this evening from the Director of Community Development.
I have a brief PowerPoint, we'll pull that up here in a second. I'm just kidding.
It's not late enough, okay.
So I just want to go over a couple of recent hearings on August 2nd, the planning, or the town council, sorry, met, and they considered the overlook appeal, which is before the planning commission, the planning commission denied that, the council denied the appeal, and so the project was denied. And so they will have to come back in with a new application should they proceed. The other item that was heard that evening was the recommendations from the Plan Development Study Committee, their work was, finally made its way to the council, and so they accepted the recommendations from the Plan Development Study Committee, and that will be forwarded back to the council, to the planning commission, sorry, for your review and work, and ultimately a recommendation to council on potential modifications to the plan development ordinance, as well as the conditional use permit table. And then as I'm sure many of you know, last night, the town council began their consideration of the North 4D development applications, and that consideration will continue tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m., and so they will continue their deliberations on that application.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Do any of the commissioners have a matter to bring to the attention of the commission? Seeing none, thank you all for your time. Thank you, this meeting's adjourned.